Thank you, sir.
You. Does everybody have their mic up on? As a reminder. Alright, with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge, call my own as well.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Robbins. Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bonnet.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Allgaier.
Here.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
Alright, thank you. Next up, we got approval of board minutes. Looks like we got five sets of minutes to approve here. Commissioner Bonnet.
Yeah, I approve that we approved organizational session minutes from January 7th, 2025. Close session minutes from Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. Executive session minutes from Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. Special sessions, 10 minutes from Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. And the close session minutes from February 11th, 2025.
For Commissioner Wessel, any discussion? Not all in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Yoder, say true. Alright, next up, we're Communications.
We have to do approval of the agenda.
That's a lie. I went and I asked off too quick. Alright, you have a motion for the agenda?
And the one I addition, not like that. And I sent you earlier, so we post this show, new part two.
Alright, what am I?
New item, 72.
72, yes.
Under action items. The EBS on your, on your desk. Yes, I would like to, I would like to have number 682 to move over to consent agenda and place down with 7B. Or, or actually, 7B2. Say that one more time, please. 682 from consent agenda, which is the VFW little bigger post. Move to action item 7 of B2. Which I think is already on there. So I just thought, we, we move that as we remove it just from there. No.
It's in both places.
What that one is, Commissioner, is accepting the grant. Right. And the other, and the other one is accepting the agreement for the implementation grant. Right, but I'm just, just saying, we'll move them for both of them down there.
That's two different.
It's doing well there, they're different things. It would have to be 1A, that, I A. Because I would like to do that in four. You want to, you want to have the acceptance of the grant under A, under A1. Okay. Other words, you want to be able to accept the grant separately. The other one is the agreement. Okay, I agree with you there, okay. Okay, I know what you're doing. So where's the grant? On 781, the action items. Yeah, I got it. Yes, just really want. I make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Alright. For Commissioner Wessel, discussion? Yep, Commissioner Wessel, second. Any other discussion? Not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Yoder, say true. Alright, now we're up to Communications.
May I straighten up, Dave? All my faces are pointed at your desk. So it's a table.
Alright. Ted, that makes a difference. We have Michael group here.
Second.
Second time?
Good. Maybe, maybe he's running a little late, so he's broken.
Exactly. Alright, so next up.
I'm going to ask him if he comes in later, we allow him to talk.
Alright, next up, we're then Drain Commission.
Hold on. Yeah, our engineer is here yet, he should be here any minute, but he's not here yet, so I don't know if you want to.
Just wait on that as well, then. You can filter public comment, let's see.
Yeah. Okay, he should be here.
Alright. Keep moving on then. Next up, we have public comment and three minutes, agenda specific. Do we have any public comments tonight? All opposed?
Lois Bailey from the village of Suttons Bay. Concerning vehicle purchases, maybe you've already thought about this, because Glenn was mentioning federal funding freezes last week's meeting. If you can delay your vehicle purchases, it might not be an essential item until you know, can't hear me? I don't know, how do you turn this?
There should ever red light.
Where do you find a green light?
Yeah, I just, I just know it from the back.
Okay. Anyway, maybe you're already thinking of this. Should free vehicle purchases be slowed down until the trickle down of federal funding freezes, sort of settles out? So you know where we are, in case there's something that's more essential that comes along that you need to have funds for as an emergency? So just a thought, thanks.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. We came across the, the impact of 20 pages of materials on a DSC agreement, and it winds up being on the agenda as a DSC agreement, but no one would know what that means if it doesn't say broadband. People would never understand what it's all about. So I went through all these documents and attending all these meetings, and I've, we've, we've looked at, this is a $20 million project, not small potatoes, but it's a $20 million project. And, and it only is out to benefit a very small percentage of the people, but paid for all county taxpayers, one way or the other. It's an apparently unnecessary costly project, where we have a peculiar wisdom in the commission to do this in the first place, going back a couple of commissions. And that, the private sector would have done it much better and much faster, we're quite sure. Some characteristics we see of this non-mandated project, it's for some reason never got on to last week's meeting. I don't understand why I wasn't on the, on the, on the vetting process at last week's executive meeting. It does not benefit a significant majority of the taxpayers, this project. It was a panicked rush rush project, the way we can understand, with no bid contracts, and also, we believe, a violation of board rules. It appears to have had poorly vetted consultants and contractors. Poor performance and completion date standards. Two years late and extra costs. County electors did not lawfully petition the county for this project. And it seems to be some kind of behind the scenes decision making process by some self-appointed people on the commission. And we're not sure that all the commissions are privy to all that's been going on. And it seems that the DTR slush fund, surplus money, may be used to finance some of this stuff, so. And then, other thing is, it's not mandated by Michigan county law, MCL 46.11. And then finally, we've kind of concluded that there's perhaps a chunk of incompetence and ineptness by perhaps the people that seem to be blessed with much more omnipotence and omniscience than the people who elected them. Thank you.
Any other, Officer?
Keith Ashley, Leland Township. Just a couple of comments on the Leland Dam disposal. I went through the packet online tonight, and I didn't see any information on that, so I hope when you get to that subject, you will be elaborating quite a bit on what that really means to us, so. Couldn't find anything on it. The other point I'd like to make is on the Point Broadband projects that are going on. They came past my house and did their excavations and put in the service. And the service is great, I'm real happy with it, the rates are really cheap. I'm happy with that. I've only had two outages in about five months, and that's not so bad. But they hire private contractors to do the construction and whatnot, and most of them seem to be from downstate. They have no part in the interest of this community. And they work in the right of way, which is their right, of course, but they leave a hell of a mess. And it took me several calls to finally get somebody to come out and restore the right of way, as I would have expected it to be initially. In many cases, this is a grassy lawn area. And they leave it as a place that bulldozers had a field day. So I think in looking through your Point Broadband package in here, there should be something in there that says they'll restore the right of way. It's the way they found it, or pretty darned close to it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, to McCalla Elm Township. Also like to make a comment on the Point Broadband and the cell tower. Broadband, in my opinion, is over budget and behind schedule, has been for at least a year now. But when I was watching the Super Bowl, I think they ran an ad, T-Mobile ran a commercial, said that they can provide service, roughly about 120 bucks, I believe. It gets this data link from Starlink. So they have the capability of doing both phone service and internet. Starlink actually set up a system in North Carolina by the hurricane this year. And kept a lot of those people in touch and communication, so they're a very capable entity. Point being is, explore alternatives. Point Broadband, I mean, if I was an individual looking for internet or phone service right now, I might have to really check out this T-Mobile system. And it's probably much more capable than what we're seeing being implemented in our county right at the moment. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jim White, resident of Suttons Bay, and also the chairman of the Republican Party of Leland County. So good evening, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the county. I've addressed this board in the past on the subject of wasteful spending and mismanagement of county resources. Unfortunately, I'm here to do that again this evening because a number of things have come to my attention that beg for explanation. As you know, in my past statements and during my campaign for county commissioner, I made it very clear that I do not support increasing the spending in this county year after year. In fact, I think we should be looking to reduce spending where we possibly can. One of the ways we can do that is to confine the actions of the board to those things that are specifically outlined as board responsibilities in the county by charter or bylaws. Accordingly, I spoke up quite strongly over the Point Broadband project and the expenditure of money on the Energy Futures Task Force, the government building solar panel project, the expenditure of nearly $1 million to find the chief financial officer, among other items. Because of the inattention and frankly, lack of competence, as well as failures of leadership of the previous board, our county has been spent into a financial debacle. We had a $5 million deficit last year, is my understanding. And fortunately, that is, there is a difference between a debt and a deficit, so we are currently carrying little to no debt, but as spending continues to accelerate as it has for the past several years, we will no longer be able to say that. This county will be in debt. In order to address that problem, this is, this board is going to have to make some hard financial choices, and not all of them will be popular. However, the choices to be made will be far easier if this board confines itself to those accountabilities that are designated as their responsibility by the county bylaws. Specifically, the board is tasked with hiring the county administrator, developing and passing a budget, communicating that to the constituents, overseeing the administration of it, and communicating with the county administrator to make sure the past budget is being administered efficiently and properly. That is it. It is not the job of county commissioners to create new childcare programs, to determine how to solve the affordable housing crisis, to ensure that everyone in the county has broadband access, to push green energy boondoggles, or to approve and manage any number of other projects, which may appear to be laudable or beneficial, but are outside the scope of this board's responsibility, authority, and frankly, in some cases, beyond their competence. Like most Americans, I have been watching with amusement and amazement as the Doge at the federal level reansacks the records of federal agencies and finds nothing but waste fraud abuse compounded on waste fraud abuse. At this point, there's potentially summary between 2 and 5 trillion of that that went out with no accountability. 5 trillion dollars of that that went out with no accountability or justification. Even as I watched that debacle unfold, I realized that previous boards have put this county on a similar path financially. The difference is, the federal government can print its own money. Leland County cannot. If this board fails to rein in government spending, we are headed for a fiscal disaster. We are standing on the bridge of the Titanic, looking at a mountain of ice on our path, the real Titanic continued on that course, full speed ahead, till the very last second, I wish I would try to turn, but the. Oh, that's too bad. I guess I'll have to wait till the.
Any other public comments?
Kathy Buck in Leland Township. Regarding the fiscal responsibility of this county, one of the main reasons to have government is to provide safety nets for our constituents, our community. And I guess I haven't heard of any big fiscal problems, deficits with this county, other than the one that four commissioners voted on many years ago, and I'm not going to get into that fiasco. Other than that, I think this board has done really well. I want us to continue the things that the electors have voted for, the millages such as early childhood and our senior services. Please do not do a scorched earth program like our federal government is doing right now. You have been very fiscally responsible, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Alright, thank you. Alright, you have your part here, Jim, or no? If not, we'll just keep moving.
Yeah, he should be here any minute.
Alright. Alright, next up, we have Commissioner comments. Alright, next up, we're to the consent agenda items, and I'll just read a statement here. Purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected and will not be the second. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Wessel?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Four seconds. Commissioner Bonnet? Alright, all in favor, of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So, that's right, we've got to do a roll call.
Commissioner Wessel? You doing a roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Allgaier?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
7-0.
Alright, thank you. Next up, we're at item number one. Our action items, human resources, IT technician position approval.
Last week, you did approve this on a 70 vote to move forward with this particular request. We were glad we would bring forth a part-time position of a number of 60, within 24 hours a week, of an IT technician position. It was last week we had it in front of you, that it was going to be a non-union position. Well, found out that I was just dead wrong, so, you know, so. Thank you, Mr. Bonnet, for bringing it up. So what we have in front of you is the same, the same position, but the only thing that's changed is that the study approved the job description and the IT department approved employee master list. But there are other differences, is that we will have to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the teachers on your desk. And it is, what we had in the packet was a draft of that, of agreement. Legal counsel did bring it back to us yesterday, and what we have on your desk is the final version of that intergovernmental agreement. So that's why we moved it down to the action items.
Commissioner Wessel?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the IT technician job description, the addition of the IT technician position to the IT department, creative employee master list, and the letter of understanding between Leland County and Teamster State County and municipal workers local 214 as presented.
Second. For Commissioner Wessel, discussion? Alright.
I was correct, I believe this used to be a position, a part-time position, and then.
It used to be a full-time position sometime. And it was, it was under the union.
In one of the descriptions, it says that the help provided sometimes extends to township staff, is that a, this?
Every so often, there's, we get things that, from what I understand, of sorts, she's not here. But every so often, we do, because of our computers and stuff, the township relies upon us to help them get some of their information. So occasionally, we will help, we don't go out and work on their computers. We do, on the interchanging of getting information into our web page.
So we don't go, oh, I see, the connection with the webpage, you know? I understand.
Any other discussion? Alright, if not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Chairman Yoder, 7-0. Next up, we have Drain Commission. Your top request.
Last week, you did approve, moving forward with the purchasing of a drain, of a computer drain commission. And so, because it wasn't unanimous vote, it's back in front of you for your consideration.
Carter?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners purchase a printer copier from Netlink for the drain commissioner in the amount of $1,199, with funds to come from the due competing fund account 645-000-00097000.
I will report it so we can discuss it.
Discussion?
We had talked last week about the possibility of sharing printers. I understand there's some large, large sized printers in the building. And I don't know if we explored all the actions on it.
Commissioner Walker?
Yeah, I was saying, thoughts that I had, and I know we had the capability in the, well, I shouldn't say, I know we have, in the, in the past, we had the capability with the planning department, large size printers, and some other departments have that capability. Well, yeah, so I could be wrong now. But then we are all, we're together, I don't know why we wouldn't print on another printer, while we had, and buy a lot of ours for a built-in printer. If we had the ability to print, you know? You're not going to print 30 documents a day, or probably 30 documents a month, then you can't share with another worksite and go out and pick up your copies. We've all gone on that note.
Hey Brian. So, I mean, do you understand that there's a printer already downstairs that I'm using? But it's not my printer? So why don't, why don't you figure out a way to make that work?
Exactly, I think that's what I just said. I mean, if we have printers in the building all over the place, I don't.
Is there a reason you can't use that one? Or they tell you you can't?
Well, I am, I am using it, but it's Buzz Long's printer.
So, is he still?
Sorry, Mr. Walker. Okay, since, uh, last Tuesday, I talked to a few people. Not that I'm against getting you a printer, it's just hoping for a company to buy us that money if we don't need to. I talked to Rob. Rob's got a Steve U just here, maybe two times a year. And he has the same printer, he said he's, oh, $5,100, $5,600. I'm also hearing rumbles since last Tuesday, that he may be doing some of the stuff that Steve did with the boss. So I'm like, well, why aren't we sharing? Why can't we just go back to the old system that we had with Steve? And if you need a small printer, I can understand for your office. As far as the big ones spending $5,100. When we can share as neighbors, get along. I think that's the route to go. If down the road you get busy and you need this, then you come back and we'll discuss it and.
Okay, well, the, I guess the point is, is that Buzz needs to be part of this conversation. I mean, you know.
I think you, as his neighbor, running in the same office, and probably doing work with him, should have had this discussion before tonight, before you showed up.
Uh, I did have that discussion with him, okay? But he, he was under the impression that the drain commissioner, you know, was going to have his own printer. I guess, you know, there was probably some miscommunication, I guess. But he's, he's expecting that, that the drain commissioner was going to get a printer. You know, and actually, he, he said to me the other day, well, if you're getting a new printer here, because his printer doesn't print in color. Okay? So if you're getting a printer that prints in color, then he, he was going to have a discussion about some kind of an arrangement where he would get rid of his printer, you know, and then use, use the new one.
So we could maybe at some point, share the cost.
Right, that's what he's, that's really what he was getting at, was that, is that since this new printer can do color, he would, he would just, you know, have Netlink take his printer back or whatever, and then have some, have an agreement, you know, in using the new printer.
Carter?
How can you just do black and white, paint by Levens versus?
Just really depends on what the project is, what I'm looking at. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I'll get, I'll get, I'll get some drawings from the engineer right here, engineer just joined us here. I'll get, I'll get 24 by 36 drawings that are reduced down to 11 by 17. Okay? And print those, so I can, I can review them. Not that often, but it does happen, you know? Especially right now, we got four drainage districts that are. districts that are active, and there's going to be engineering, there will be engineering drawings being produced that I need to review.
So, how often do you think you can be printing eight by elevens?
Eleven by seventeens?
No, just regular.
Well, yeah.
How often do you do them?
But the only time I really print eight and a half by elevens is if I want to have a file, like, say, emails, emails that we get, and I put into a file, so I have a hard copy.
So, do you have any extra small printers around, and then you could...
But I don't need that.
Okay.
I don't need that.
I, I kind of agree, then, you're not doing it very often.
Well, the one, the one I, no, the one, the one that I would use more is the capability of doing eleven by seventeen, when I want to review his drawings.
All right.
Can I just ask? I know there's a division, this is my own ignorance, excuse me, you know, with conservation product, and it runs a little different than everything else, but...
Mm-hmm.
That printer is owned by Leon County, that he uses? It's not, okay, so there's a wall there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's probably where we're missing the connection, is that actually, the Conservation District has the authority to say, no, this is ours, you can't use it, and that's not doing that.
Right.
Sometimes you got to go and wear that authority fall.
Right.
So, you're running along the same, thank you.
This, this is one down there, print eleven, what is it, eleven?
Yeah, eleven, eleven by seventeen, but it's black and white.
Right.
Yeah, there's a difference, there's a big difference when...
You know, Buzz wants the colored one just as well, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we surely have this conversation with him as well.
Sure. And like I say, he's willing to do an agree, you know, some kind of an agreement.
Yeah, and you can use his, you know, until we get that settled.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, yeah, there's, there's, you know, it's not like an emergency. You know?
I guess that's what we're looking at, so.
I want, you know, I want to divide that dollar spent here today until we can have that conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't you refer this to your March meetings?
Yes.
There are also on the table to refer to our March second session.
While we have motion to take it out.
I bought a hole-in-one for four fifty. There's an eleven by seventeen code.
And I'd promote you to move this to March.
Refer to our March executive session.
Refer to March's executive session.
All right.
What, second, I mean, you, any commissioners who would, does anybody second it? Excuse me? I said, any commissioners can put something on the agenda, it doesn't have to be seconded or voted on, you know, that's up to the...
Right, but I think my, what...
All I'm good is referring this discussion to the next meeting, so it's on your agenda, you're referring it for purposes, you don't have to add it to it, I'm just going to pick it up and I'll bring back a report.
All right, so we're good to just do it that way, instead of a, this motion, what is, I understand that it'll be on the march?
No, and I'll, and I'll further the discussion with Buzz.
Better than me, yeah, maybe he can come through.
And you.
Because I understood that this was necessary to give operate his office, but it's the first time I've heard that Buzz, and everybody was happy to share, so, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for having the truck purchase.
Okay, last week, I'm not advising you to purchase a truck or anything like that, just wanted to bring you up to date that one of the questions was if we could buy a cheaper truck. And on your desk here is that we did go look, and you'll see highlighted three particular pickup trucks, says you can't purchase the M I D L, which considers to be a little bit less expensive by the tires. Just wanted to make you aware of it, that's an American-made vehicle, that's the only, only type of vehicles that M I, M I deals, M I deal, deals with. Just giving you, this is the information. The other couple of points that I did put in the EDS for you is that the van, the van, which, the question was asked if it's four-wheel drive, and I have no idea, but I'll find out. But it won't be available until late April or early May, at the earliest. The other vehicles probably won't be here until later, until late summer, so, just giving you the information. There you go, how you want to do it. The other option is if, uh, continue to, continue to use his own vehicle, with this reimbursement for the mileage, if that's, if that's a supplement. If you need something on the side of your vehicle, so you can cover it up, like a metal thing to say, here, you're the drain commissioner at this moment, we can afford to buy you that, this is where we are, so. So, I wanted to bring you back the information for your own consideration, so, I'm not making a reputation, we want anything, that's what we are.
So, there are no other, there's nothing else to update right now?
There's nothing else in the fleet right now that I would even allow my children to be in.
I'm sure what that means.
That means, no, I'm not going to let my kids, I'm not going to let them into it. And once coming down the pipe is even worse. And when I say a shares vehicle, there's going to be some shares vehicles that could nail be taken out of their fleet and moved in, and then newer vehicles moved in, but I don't know what condition they're in, and I can't tell you for sure when they will be.
Our administrator just lowered the price, we will send those out for auction, so, later this year.
The control trucks will get a lot if we give it away, from what I understand.
And I did, I did just find out with that list there, about an hour ago, I got a call from M I D L, and that Genesee County Road Commission ordered five, five pickups, and they only took delivery on four. And he said that he's got this, this fifth one that he was willing to cut a deal on, you know, but I haven't seen the numbers yet, so, it'll be added to that list.
How often did you decide?
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's going to be the number, I told him what the numbers are, budgeted number, and he said that it would fall, those ones that are highlighted there, it would, it would fall into those, into that category. He just didn't have an exact number yet, but it would be like in the thirty-seven to thirty-eight, you know?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we purchase a, a truck from Sarah, Traverse City, along with the truck decals purchased from Simplicity, and the placement decals by Tross Brothers of Cedar, and we, and it'll not exceed forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, with funds to come from the motor pool fund account, and adding in nine seven zero 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 zero.
Support? Support by Commissioner Walter?
There's a truck here that says it's thirty-two thousand dollars, right, ten forty-six?
I didn't say ten forty-six, I said not to exceed. See, wait, 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 wait. I like...
What are you, what are you proceeding with, Mr. Bonik? The motion you just made was what was turned down last week?
No, what, this is different, because this is not to exceed, and it includes the, you know, the Tross Brothers and the Simplicities, science to go on it.
I know that that was what I think we...
It could be the...
The your thousand?
It would be, pretty advised of me to move forward with buying a vehicle from Sarah. Now, so, do you want to take Sarah out of it? Well, because, I don't know, okay, so I would say... Whoa, 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 I, where do I mount the truck from? Well, I think that's what we had, what he had planned was from Sarah, and I think that's who he's dealing with.
No, 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 M I D, M I D L is who I was just talking to about, yeah.
I would ask, you know, in the motion, and I would remove from, from Sarah, that he just purchased it, along with the decals, you know, and the Tross Brothers doing, you know, the placement, and not to exceed forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. He just gave us a lot of latitude, yes.
All right, so, how does that change your motion? No, it's already got, it's already, there's already a motion, so I just wanted to make sure the second is okay with that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so now we can go on.
I thought I did, just for discussion.
But yeah, no worries.
So, well, what he's saying is, if these three fit in there with the decals and stuff underneath that price range, then that'll be a gold, so it wouldn't have to be forty-six, it could be thirty-nine.
Well, they got one here for thirty-two, I don't know why.
No, does that include...
And are these from M I D L?
Yeah, no, it, he was, when I was talking with M I D L on the phone, that is a bare-bones, that's like a base price, okay? With, yeah, so...
The decals were going to be separate anyway, that was in the original motion last weekend, so I think that's, that's a given.
Right, right.
Well, it's still, it sounds like we're going to be purchasing one way or the other, possibly with M I D L.
Yeah.
We just got to know what M I D L's offer is going to be, because of what it is, do you know what kind of truck it is?
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's a G, it's a GMC Sierra, uh, full-size pickup, um, and it sound, it sounds like it's going to be a good deal, because it was supposed to go to Genesee County, now they're stuck with it, and they just want to unload it. And, and, he's just, he just hasn't been able to give me the, the number yet.
And he's got it on his lot.
Yeah, sitting on his lot.
Mr. Walker?
I'll work it through. Yeah, we're only like two and a half weeks away. Would it be okay, if you feel comfortable, if they same as a printer, it's two and a half weeks?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. Sure, that's fine, yeah, and I'll, I'll find out more about this truck he's talking about, too, you know, because I just found out about like an hour ago, an hour and a half.
Just asking for official P O vote.
Yeah, yeah.
By Bonik was to purchase a pickup truck along with truck decals, which is from Simplicity and the place that the decals by Tross Brothers of Cedar, and you're not matching, so forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty, we're going to come to a full five, and you can...
All right, do you have a discussion on that motion, Mr. Campbell?
I'm, I'm, still, I guess, we don't know how long, how much, how many hours, I know you've got more coming up, but I, I, and I don't know if this is, this is some kind of hybrid thought, but I brought it up last week, that this is more than, I think the confusion is that this is more than a vehicle that someone who's employed would use to just, to go to a meeting, or to go to, to go to some, some working event, this is actually the drain commissioner's truck, and so I think that's what is pushing a lot of this discussion. But I can't get by the, the part-timeness of the job of buying a truck for a part-time sort of, of a position. I can try to work some hybrid out, where, I don't know if you can do this, but, because it is the drain commissioner's truck, to, to pay a couple hundred bucks a month, plus mileage, because you have to have a truck, you have to have one available, and pay that to you, you use your truck, however, you, you have some kind of a decal you can put on the side when you go, we work through that, but we help you afford that truck, but we don't walk out of the showroom with a truck that's worth five thousand dollars less for a part-time, yeah, that's the part I have a hard time with.
Are you willing to use your truck?
Well, it's, it's not convenient, because I'm not the only one using my truck, you know, especially in the winter, you know, you know, the wife uses it, too. So, it's not, it's not a convenient solution.
Is it your only car?
It's the only, yes, exactly.
I get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got insurance issues, liability issues.
Well, that's why you, that's money, you know.
That's why, that's why the common finance is on fire.
All right, any other discussion on that? If not, I'll just, I guess, I, I'm a little nervous of spending this much money with what you brought up with, and I understand within the motion that would fall under that if that deal did come through, I guess, or it'd be a lot cheaper, that understanding, but I just, I'm struggling with paying that much, maybe if we got other quotes here, or other quotes, but other prices here that we could get, you know, all over ten grand, possibly cheaper. So, I would be more comfortable with just tabling it till March, if he has time to do that, and trying to figure out, you know, till you get a better quote from them, and, you know, that's where I'm at, I guess, specifically.
But I, I think we ought to work with Kathy, I think it's, we're going to be careful about individuals negotiating. All due respect, all this is going to come through this office.
Yeah.
I was speaking to the fact that, that our drain commissioner reached out to, or received a call from, from a dealer, and I don't think I want to do that.
Yeah. Well, I just, I was just being proactive, I wanted to get something done.
Any other discussion on that? If not, um, you roll call now.
Mr. Bonik?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mr. Walter?
No.
Mr. Russell?
No.
Chairman Yoder?
No.
Mr. Alguier?
No.
Ails?
Twenty-six.
We will be, we'll be working on, we'll keep it for...
All right, so, now you might as well do your drain for updates.
Yeah. Yeah, does everyone have this, was this in your packets? A bunch of the red letterings? Yep, yep, you're good on those numbers, too. Yeah, she just took those numbers off of this sheet for that spreadsheet. So, thank you. Apologize for being late, I'm Brian Sensi with GEI Consultants, working with the drain commissioner since 2018, and various drain projects, and I had talked to Timmy came in last month, and wanted to get on the board, because I know we have some new commissioners, some of you know me, and see me every couple months, but there are some commissioners that this may be entirely new thing, that you know nothing about, so, you're in maybe the same boat that some of the other commissioners were in six, seven years ago, when they were first learning about county drains, so. Um, we did get two new drain projects that had boards of determination, that's essentially the, the go, no-go hearing that's done, um, we had that at the end of November, in this room, we held one, two on the same night, one was for the Little Glen Lake Drain, which impacts the south side of Little Glen Lake, west of like the Narrows, the channel, maybe like a thousand feet on the south side of the road. The road commission had done some digging out, trenching along the south side of twenty-two, essentially, there's flooding up against twenty-two in those houses, it's been a problem for a while. We tried to work with the road commission and also M D A, because they did the resurfacing project last year, we had some discussions from us two years trying to avoid a drain, which is usually our first step with these drains, is we try to avoid making them a drain, either by having another entity do it, or some combination. But ultimately, there, and that stuff is just for resurfacing. The unique thing about this project is it is predominantly going to be paid by M D A, not through, uh, M D A's, like T S C, or like how they fund projects, they have a pool of money that pays for drain assessments. We work with the drainage division of M D A, and on some projects, uh, depending on if they feel that their contribution to the issuer to the problem is higher or lower, not anything will get them to say to you, they will look to contribute more, so, I've got a commitment, basically, of around ninety percent of that job is... uh, they will look to contribute more, so I've got a commitment basically of around ninety percent of that job is gonna be paid by MDA. So that's why there's very low numbers for the county, for the township, if you look at the, the bottom of page one where it says estimated at-large assessments, the at-larges are, um, like the townships, county, and, uh, and the road commission through the county. So the board is aware, uh, I believe it was November of twenty-three, former, uh, Commissioner Christensen came to the board and basically set in place an assessment setup for the county, because, uh, Lillina County doesn't, I think there's one charter township. Uh, we ran into this issue in the first project, Lake Plus Drain, which we were looking to do fund. Most of my projects are downstate, they're all charter townships. Township needs to raise money for an at-large assessment, they can simply, you know, go to their board, that's not the case, it's not a charter township. So, what Commissioner Christensen stepped in, went to the board and basically said, "Look, on these new drains, so when we establish them, we can't hit the townships how we normally would, cause they could assess based on public health convenience and welfare," that's what it says in the drain code law. That, the county is going to pay a higher portion, up to not exceeding thirty percent of anyone's job. So we've done two, which the county's been assessed thus far, we did the Lake Plus Drain, which I think the county was like at twenty-nine and a half percent, and then we did South Bar Lake Drain, which was constructed last, or, excuse me, last summer and fall. Um, completed in the fall. So those are the two on the very back page, um, they're completed, their assessments went on the books this last year. You guys got recouped all the money that you had lent to those drain districts to pay for all the costs getting up to the borrowing. So, in the, in the sheet that Kathy held out to you, just for the commissioners that aren't aware, in the drain code law, the drain commissioner's supposed to have a revolving fund, and that revolving fund basically pays for work on projects or drains up until, uh, because the drain commissioner can expend five thousand dollars per mile per drain unencumbered. Maintenance needs to be done, something needs to be done, he can spend that money and not, uh, get a resolution petition to exceed that, so. But, in order to make improvements to a drain or exceed that five thousand dollar cap, or if it's a new drain, you have to have a petition. So either a municipality or landowner needs to come, uh, and petition the drain commissioner to establish these drains, or to, improve the drain to exceed that five thousand dollar limit. Little Glen Lake was a landowner petition, I actually think we got like, there's only sixteen properties in the district, and we got like thirteen or fourteen signatures. Basically, everyone signed it, cause they wanted it. We went to Elmwood Township in regards to the Elmwood Township number one drain. That, just because that's a little bit different, it was actually established in the eighties, it's why the Lillina County, this whole history with that drain and the whole process, is why you guys have a drain commissioner, you didn't have one prior to that time period, uh, where it was just one, one person, so. That one, because we were, it's basically, the, the issue is in, right on the corporate limits of Traverse City, some of the Traverse City is in the drain district, so they will be assessed. Um, and it basically goes up to the county line, but, uh, we went to the township because we were trying to, uh, add lands to the district, but not have a hearing before we had that board determination, so we were just saving some time and costs. So we talked to the supervisor and we, uh, leave in their August meeting, they petitioned, so we held both boards of determination the same night of November and it passed. So. And, and just for you're aware, I was saying on the cost, so because there isn't a revolving fund, and this is the way that several counties I work with, let's say they do this, is they pay for the drain, they essentially use their general fund as the drain commissioner's revolving fund. So you are paying for like my time, like if to develop a design, or, uh, if we do a mailing, the county from the general fund is essentially paying that, but it's being accounted for the district. And once we have a design completed and we go to bid, and each district gets their own financing, separate for the county, so each district too, so you're aware, it's just like a municipal entity, can be sued, can borrow money, uh, and, you know, it can do basically all the same things a county can do. Legally speaking, so when we go to bid and we finance, then that money, that whatever is expended, so we had Lake Plus, last year we did South Bar Lake, the, that money, after the bond proceeds, whatever that lump total amount, that goes back to the county separately, and then they'll pay their assessment separately. So there is an assessment associated with it, with that money that's funding all the work, all of that gets paid back. Where that is, the savings and the help is, the county couldn't do that, uh, like I said, legally speaking, they're supposed to provide a revolving fund, it's like the second line of the drain code. But, um, we could simply go to any bank and borrow money, but then we're gonna pay an interest on it, so it's, some counties have it set up this way, Berry County that I work a lot with does it this way, Lenaway does it this way, same thing, uh, they're, they're similar counties, uh, more rural, but the idea is that, um, uh, you're basically lending free money for the district, and then they pay it all back. So it is a savings to the property owners and to everyone that's getting assessed in the drain district, cause there's no borrowing cost on that. And I, and I will say, so we've completed two of the projects, there are four in the queue, I've kinda listed them by how we think they'll be able to go to construction. The, 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 the two that potentially this year are the Timberly Drain, which is basically a mi, a half a mile west on Vouch Road of where Lake Plus Drain was, it's on Timberly Hills Drive, Mount Josh, uh, on the map, it's on the Elmwood Township, Soulland Township line. It's a, uh, there's a sand dirt road there, um, and that's essentially where that drain project is, we're, we're waiting on one easement that is kind of the crux of everything, that's been our big holdup. And, and, and so, as long as we get that easement, um, you know, we'll likely be able to go to construct that, uh, this summer, and be able to get it, uh, on the books, on the taxes for December one of twenty-five. That might be a possibility for the Little Glen Lake Drain, um, we actually had a meeting with Eagle today on the, the Schaumburg Drain, separate. But we may not need to get an Eagle permit on that project, because basically, we, there's actually a pipe underneath the road, underneath M twenty-two, um, and we may be able to just hook into that pipe and not have to put a new line under twenty-two. So. And then we've got the Schaumburg Drain in the Elmwood Township number one drain, uh, the Elmwood Township number one drain, the petition was really for your classic consignments, Lendale Burger Place in there, there's flooding that occurs, uh, just south of Carter Road and M twenty-two. We have worked a lot with the road, excuse me, MDA on this, cause MDA has basically a project to rip up twenty-two from seventy-two to the north, and they're gonna be plumbing all new water, sanitary, storm sewer through there. So we have been in communication and working with them throughout, they understand our project, and so the idea is, once they're, that, all the new storm sewer is gonna be replumbed in twenty-two, uh, in, uh, and we are going to hook into that new, uh, storm sewer. So that's kind of the plan, but we need their stuff to go in first, otherwise we can't do any of the, the work in that area. And then we have talked to the road commission, there were two culverts that they were gonna do, they've already been permitted to do them, had them on the books to do them last year. Uh, Steve and I met with the road commission a couple times, but, uh, the second time we met with them was, uh, there's a potential that they may make both of those crossings part of that kind of drain, actually, one of them is actually the old eighty-five drain, it's on eighty, so. But we need to have further discussions with them in regards to how we'll break up the cost and the work on that, so. Yeah.
You talked about the road commission, uh, Steve told us, I think, last spring, that although we could request that the, that the road commission pay their twelve and a half percent, they would have to go to approve that, and we aren't guaranteed that we would receive that.
Yeah, so how the road commission percentage works is, um, the, the road, the, in all other, in, in most other counties, the county is only assessed for benefits to county roads. Okay? So there's a, s, in Act Fifty-One, which kind of controls the, really controls where they can expend Act Fifty-One monies that they get for their right-of-way, there is a whole process called Rule Fourteen A that lays out how they can take that Act Fifty-One monies and pay for drain assessments through that. So essentially, what we've done is, the county were kind of treating as this, uh, entity that made between zero and thirty percent for public health convenience and welfare, we agreed to use that Rule Fourteen A to determine the road commission's percentage, and what it says in the law is like, so if you determine, using that formula, it's like ten percent, say, then the road commission would pay five percent. And I don't know if that's optional, so I, 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 I think that's.
I think.
I'm not sure how you guys work that out, if you did, I thought you had some resolution with that, or something.
There was a resolution that was passed, number twenty, twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five last year, where we would work, um, collaboratively with the road commission, they wanted to be kept informed, each drain at a time, not just be presented a bill, if you recall that, and that they would reimburse, um, fifty percent of their percentage that we pay on their behalf. So there's a spirit of cooperation there, there is a resolution that was passed last year. I, I heard loud and clear, they just don't want to be surprised, they wanna be working with us toward that.
Yeah, and that's how, that's how we did the South Bar Lake Drain, so like, I sent them our Rule Fourteen A, like, calculations prior to our day review, which is like our hearing, when all the percentages and assessments are presented to everybody. Um, and we do, we try to meet with like the township ahead, the townships ahead of time, and the road commission now, but we sent them the information prior so they could, basically, you know, so they don't need to come to the day review, they can just be in agreement with it, so that's how we'll continue it going forward.
And if, if I could just walk you through the overview, I've taken the information that Brian provided on his summary of drain projects, and the first column is the total estimated cost overview of each project. The county share is again an estimate, rough percentage up to thirty percent, up to thirty percent. However, we also pay the road commission's share for them, so the second column, county share, would be ours plus the road commission's amount. Then I broke out a column, a column for county road commission's share, just so you'd see what the calculation looked like, and then if they were to participate in Resolution Twenty, Twenty-four dash zero zero five, and reimburse us fifty percent, it does state fifty percent in the resolution, then we would expect a hundred and, if all four drains came to fruition, a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars back from the road commission. So far, as Brian has mentioned, we don't have the revolving fund, we are paying the bills on behalf of the drain commissioners, um, contracting, engineering, things like that, they are pointed off in the road, or the drain commissioner's budget. I keep a ri, a running cumulative tally of those expenses since inception, which is down below, you'll see an inception column for each drain. So so far, like, um, Little Glen, even though our share of Little Glen, should it become a drain, is seventy-five hundred dollars, we have already spent twenty-eight thousand in engineering costs on behalf of the drain commissioner, which when Little Glen bonds, they'll get a chunk of money, they'll pay Lillina County back the twenty-eight-three, we pay our assessment of seventy-five hundred, you do have options on your payments. And then, so I'm just showing you the net cash flow in the far right column, it's a cash flow. Because we will get paid back what we fronted, but then we make our assessment to the drain district. And because this has been over a span of many, many years, going back to two thousand eighteen, the Bank of Lillina has a revolving amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand toward these four drains. It's taken years to get this amount of money expended, but once they become drains, that's paid back, but that second column is our share of those drains. Have I thoroughly confused you?
I just wanna say one thing before, so, question, those, just so everyone's aware, like, I, I, I have never done this for any other county. And, and I don't, I've never found another engineer that would do it, so this is my best take at everything, based on cost and everything. You will not get any other drain commissioner engineer to ever give you percents ahead of time like this, so. Ju, you know, the, the, and I think in the first two, the, they were all close to this, but just so you're aware, I mean, this is like, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, so this is my best take on all these, where they're at, how many easements we need of permitting, where I think we're gonna come in at. And, and it leans on the more worst case, okay, so it does lean, I'd rather give you worse numbers than be under that, so. Sorry.
Mr. Bonnick?
Yeah, um, I would, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think that's a very good presentation, and I, I think this should be given to the road commission as a, you know, as an overview, and that they, at least, you know, we communicate with them that this is what we're thinking, and, and.
Yeah, they did get that, they do get this, yeah.
Would they get a copy?
Uh, no, I, she sent this, I can forward it to them, yeah, yeah.
The ink is pretty wet.
Yeah, she literally just was like, yeah.
I'd like the idea that we, you know, communicate with them, be transparent, and keep this going.
Can you just walk me through the budget ramifications, like, uh, this is a general fund, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, that's an amount that's gotta get pulled and then reimbursed, where, how does that fit into what?
We have already spent this money over years, so this is just an accumulative tracking of the funds. When it is spent, you'll see in, uh, claims, late claims, I believe, to, tonight, there's two bills for GEI that are going to be for twenty-four expensive expenses for two of the drains, I think it was.
Basically, it's all of Little Glen and Elmwood number one for all of twenty-twenty-four.
So those are going to be put back to the twenty-four budget, it is, they are pointed off in the drain commissioner's, um, budget, um, there's, uh, one oh one, six ninety, two seven five, and each drain has a line item in his budget. So then we amend the drain commissioner's budget to keep up with those expenditures, the general fund is fronting that money.
So over a number of years, it's a zero sum.
Well, I mean.
Pretty much?
Yes.
Because.
Eventually, yes.
You will get it back, I mean, yeah, but then you do have your money that you put forward towards your drain. Yes.
But in terms of the, are in the money and then get, yes, like the Schaumburg is the one that's been out since twenty-eighteen. And that's last, that's two years.
And, and what will happen is, we get close to a drain, then there'll be a letter that the drain commissioner sends out to all the property owners, and they'll say, "Okay, this is where you're headed. Do you want to pay upfront, or would you like to be assessed over a number of years?" And Lillina County receives the same letter, because we have our own question, do you want to pay upfront, or do you want to be assessed over years? And last, it wasn't in twenty-four, it was twenty-three that we had the drains come to fruition, and twenty-three, we went drain less than twenty-four. Um, the Board of Commissioners considered both options, and the treasurer and I met, and we felt that the amount was so small over a period of time, we would just pay our share upfront.
Is basically a special assessment district for well-ends?
Well, not for well-ends, I mean, they're, they're, right, they're, they're spec, the special assessment districts for anyone that benefits from the project, that's how. General, general it is, so most of the people in the assessment district have no issues, no problems, so that makes us highly unpopular and, you know, we, we please a small majority of people when we do a drain project, so we're always, we're, we're connected democratically.
Yeah, I've already gotten a few phone calls.
So, in looking at the construction, excuse me, um, to look at the construction projections, it looks like maybe Timberly will be the drain that comes this year, and if we stay still, right now, we would be looking at finding a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's not in your budget, to, um, put toward that drain.
That's what I can tell, thank you. My, my question, and I don't know who it goes to, but I'm assuming some of these, uh, assessment districts are, because permitting was allowed and building, development was allowed, um, in an area where probably wasn't wise to build. And I'm, I'm, I don't know if we can do anything about that, but I'm not sure that everybody ought to be paying for people who want to build in this track on a hill overlooking a lake and then a year later that it's a assessment district because there's drainage problems.
Yeah, I, in, in general, and this is especially true with like, I, I know for a fact Schaumburg. Like Schaumburg is about a third, maybe 25% of the drain that I deal with, like downstate, are unorganized, I'll say, development. So not looking at a big picture. Everyone, you know, just, everyone's looking at one lot on one house. There's no issues, but when you put everything together, then you got issues. That's about a third of the jobs that I see, that's what, you know, that they need a petition. And we're dealing with developments between like the 70s and 90s, that is a lot of that. Uh, that's what Schaumburg is then. Schaumburg is, you had however many years of cold water stream going all the way down Schaumburg Road out to Lake Michigan. Now you have a house on every lot and basically now you have the water going underneath two houses, like literally going underneath the two houses, because you just built and built and the water has just pushed from one to the other. So, and that's really why you need a drain district. The Elmwood Township number one drain I, I mentioned, there's a whole history with that with the D N R and it deals with, I think, the, the mobile site. But that was basically, they said, you need to have a drain commissioner to deal with this stuff, because you can't be looking at things on a macro level and, and not have anyone with the authority to do any of that stuff, you know? We can't. So, um, I, I will say, the end goal in mine and all these is to resolve whatever the issue is in the most cost-effective manner possible. And we're continually trying to do that. We had a very lengthy meeting with the state on Schaumburg today, because we've had our permit in for over a year, basically, January 24. We still don't have it. And there's basically, you know, it was a good brainstorm, almost a brainstorm session of like, how can, what can you permit that we can accept financially to build, they're able to build and will still work, resolve the issue? You know, that's kind of where we were at, like, what will you permit? And we'll do. So that is the goal in all these projects. And we are trying to do them as fast as possible. Time equals money, the more time, the more, you know, you stay open.
I just have one comment. Is it Slope Drive in Timberly? I mean, because there's only one house in there.
I mean, I'm probably, it's listed on the map, like it's Mount Josh on some maps.
Turns into Mount Josh.
Mount Josh at the end, but it's like, I think that on the plat, it's called East Timberly Hills Drive.
Yeah. But as you, as you come, as you come south...
No, there's like six houses on the, on the east side of that road.
Yeah. It's an open, open field to the west, as you come south off of Fauch, about a quarter mile, then it turns into Mount Josh.
Well, that's, that, Timberly, that's, this is, it is in my district there. And I've heard, I mean, I've met a lot of the people there. Everybody on, in there, 100% supports it, but you go anybody out of that, adamantly opposed to it. And it's, you know, it's, I couldn't believe when I was up there, why people built a house up there, I couldn't, it was crazy, you know? It's literally a sandhill and that's probably why you have to, you know, do that, because there's terrible drainage here right now. You know, they can't, service can't get up there.
Right, right.
This is just an overview, correct? We're getting a lot of discussion over just an overview of projects we're working on.
No, it's overview, it's some financials.
Well, but that's not going to come back by later dates when we do an action item on, so if we do have any, any ideas we've got to take here.
All right, well, do we have any other questions for drink?
I just want to get us out of focus right here.
Yeah, the only time, if we're all done, that you will see us for any kind of approvals is when we come to finance the projects. If the bank requires us to get full fifth and credit, then we come to you. If not, you, you may not see us, other than these updates. Oh, and I will say, if anyone wants, there, I wrote it, there was a good, the Lake Plus train received the Innovational Excellence Award from the Michigan Association of County Drain Commissioners for 2024. Steve was presented with the award at our drain conference, but there was a write-up all about it in the, our Drain Commissioner Magazine called Pipeline. It's on the cover and everything, if anyone wants a copy of it. Yeah, you can keep a copy of it.
Steve's got one of the awards down, he's got...
Tim's got one of the awards down in his office.
Thank you. All right, we get to move on to our agenda for action item three, maintenance heat pump replacement.
As briefly presented to you, a recommendation to purchase, let me think here, a total of 14 heat pumps for the system to a total of $153,000. Now, we had it in the E D S that was handed to you last week, we had it in there for 12, but then we've been, Friday before, the law library, the V A room, that's used, those heat pumps come out, so we added two more of them, so he was asking you to approve it.
Yeah, I moved that the Leland County Board of Commissioners waived that policy and approved the purchase and installation of 14 Planet Masters or Water Purist brand pumps through the D and W mechanical fund. Funds to be transferred from fund number 516D P R to fund the 470 capital building fund in the amount of $153,000. Expenses come from the account ending in 970019, heat pump replacements.
Support, and we're by Commissioner Walter, discussion? Not all, do their motions say aye? Aye. Or both say nay? All right, next up, we have, but number five, planning M M P C bylaws amendment.
Let you handle this one if you'd like.
I think you're off on your agenda. I thought I was up next.
Finance motion generated.
I keep missing off too quick here.
I would not. I would, I would not help you with the M M P, sorry, I can't help you with that. No, in January, you did pass a motion on the grant writer for the D N R grant and Commissioner Bunnick was correct. And after discovery and discussion, I'm asking you to pass the motion so that I can apply that expense to a different account number. This is a postkeeping, but if I could have you just make the motion, it will override the first motion.
We'll read the motion. Commissioner O'Hara?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the M C S A group in proposal for the preparation and submittal of Michigan Trust Fund Development Grant Application for the proposed Veronica Valley Lower Point Trail Project in an amount not to exceed $6,500 from Parks and Rec Department 101,857,56801, and furthermore, authorize the chairman to execute the agreement with M C S A group.
So, Mr. Bunnick, discussion? Not all, do their signatures signify the same aye? Aye. Both say nay?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now we're up to planning M M P C bylaws.
On this one, as, as it's here, we finally got the proposed change to the bylaws to verify now that a county commission, a member of this commission and a member of the basic county commission will set on this planning, this M M P planning, for this regional material management planning committee. So I know this is something Mr. Westall had a concern about how it shouldn't be, so approve this and recover. We've already been appointed, so we just got to make sure we got the right number here. I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve Materials Management Planning Committee, known as the Lower Northwest Two Regional Material Management Planning Committee, amended bylaws that presented.
Second? For like Commissioner Robbins, discussion? Not all, do their motions say aye? Aye. Both say nay? Motion carries 70. All right, next up, we have emergency management, I feel, for investigations.
Now that you have accepted the grant from the 2% grant in earlier action, we're ready to go and issue a request for a proposal to undertake the project. And that is what this is, this was in for you. You see the R F P has been prepared and we're asking for your permission to proceed.
Mr. Bunnick?
Yeah, I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners agreed to allow the request for a proposal for Leland County 911 Dispatch Council Replacement Project to be abolished.
Second? Commissioner Robbins, discussion? Not all, do their motions say aye? Aye. Both say nay? Motion carries 70. All right, next up, we're under administration, 2% allocation acceptance, so all, do your neighbors move nay?
Great, you still need to accept 2% out, you still need to accept two grant proposals that was submitted. One, the first one is to the Leland Christian Neighbors Food Bank program.
Mr. Westall?
I move to accept the 2% allocation award from the Grand Turban Band of Ottawa and Chipper Indians to support senior services to Leland Christian Neighbors Food Factory at a, a, a long $57,800.
Support. Mr. O'Hara? This, discussion? Mr. Bunnick?
Yeah, I voted no on this, and I, I mean, and this has nothing to do against Leland Christian Neighbors. I think it's a great, you know, charity and it's a great, wonderful thing. And, and it's the same reason I asked, and I'm going to say it's the same reason I asked for the V F W grant to be thing. These are 501(c)(3)'s and that, that was pointed out to me that, that each one of us, you know, as a commissioner, took the oath to hold the Constitution. And it is unconstitutional for us to donate or not tax dollars. All right? There are many worthy 501(c)(3)'s in Leland County, you know, that we could support, you know, and I just, I just wrote down a few of these and all of them need, you know, different, different things that would help them, you know? So why are we not, you know, doing South Bay Friendship Center, which is doing a renovation? Why aren't we doing the Lions Club, you know, or the Baby Pantry for West Bay Covenant, or American Allegiant Hall, or Cedar Rod and Gun Club, or Northport Sportsman's Club, or even the Leland Cancer Society? I mean, all of these are 501(c)(3)'s, all of them need money for different things that they need to do, or for handicaps. So why do we, why, how are we deciding which charities we are going to donate the money to? You know, and I can go through, and I'm not going to spend the timeline, but I will, I can go through how this is an adverberian tax, it's what they're property tax, and you can read the agreement and see words put in there. So we should not be donating to 501(c)(3)'s. And, and I just think that this has gone on way too long and at some point, somebody's going to sue us and, and we will be in trouble. And I don't know if we'll have to pay it back or what we'll have to do, but this is just wrong to be donating money to these causes.
Mr. Westall?
I understand what Commissioner Bunnick's saying, we're not donating this money to Leland Christian Neighbors. Leland Christian Neighbors and Senior Services have worked out an arrangement that L C N can help us honor our commitment to senior services. And our senior services people are over there at Leland Christian Neighbors on Food Pantry Day handing these out. Our senior services people pick up food that's not used for seniors. This is a partnership with a nonprofit that is doing part of our job for us. It's not a violation.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Can you ask your lawyer to speak to your lawyer?
Yep.
Yeah, I did. Based on what Commissioner Bunnick said at the last meeting, I did ask our attorney about it. And he, I guess his explanation was the fact that we're in an agreement and have a contract with them is not a violation. So that's, yeah, so I, I did check into that and he did confirm to me that it is not a violation to do this. And I guess for me personally, I don't see it as us donating. We're, they contracted with us, tribe is running the money through us to give it to them, so I don't, I don't see it as a donation from us to them, but it's not our line to get with. That's how, I guess that's how I see it.
Yeah, you just stated, we give it to them. That's a donation when you're giving the money. The senior services was voted on, it's a tax that is voted on and approved. So this is not something that was voted on and approved to give to Leland Christian Neighbors. If it's going to be in coordination with them, it shouldn't come out of senior services' budget if they need the money to go over to Leland Christian Neighbors and give things out. I mean, we have unmet needs, we have all the things, you know, so, I mean, we, we're going to give $57,000 to them, we should have bought the truck, or we should buy, be buying our animal control truck with that money. Those are the kinds of things that we're supposed to be asking for, not, unless we're going to vote to give the 2% funds, have a vote on it from the people, then we shouldn't be giving it to charities. And it'll be the same thing, I have a son that belongs to the V F W Hall. I, you know, and I would like to see us have handicapped over there, you know, accessibility, but it's, then we need to do it for the Lions Club, we need to do it for Cedar Rod and Gun Club, and for any club who had needs that publicly are...
All right, so that discussion, no discussion on it, we'll call it off. All those in favor signify the same aye? Aye. Or both say nay? Nay. Motion carries 52.
And we have the second allocation, which is our acceptance, second acceptance of a grant for the V F W Little Glen Access Project, handicap access project. All the same discussions, we need to accept.
I agree we accept that grant from the Grand Turban Band of Ottawa and Chipper Indians to fund a project that's at the, I mean, can't get...
Report. All right, Mr. Campbell, did you read, or you just read on the cover, or did you have a...
That was my guess, very...
Uh, Mr. Westall? All right, any discussion on that?
None, I would just say, you know, you know, and I, and I have a son that's in the V F W, and I know that they need the handicap, but I, I just think that, again, this is a donation and you can say we have a contract, but, I mean, those same lawyers have told South Bay they can't have these contracts, or they've told Leland School they can't, but yet we can't.
All right, any other discussion? Not all, in favor of that motion, say aye? Aye. Both say nay? Nay. Motion carries 61.
Then we get down to the second item on this agenda, which is the D, which we have agreements with these particular organizations to approve their agreements. That way we can now give the money to them and they have to complete, I want to complete the forms, as we have in the packet here, of how they utilize the money to work back to the tribal tribe. This is the first thing we need you to do, and the first one will be for the Leland Christian Neighbors.
Are you saying there's something else to do here?
Yes, he had a combined, that's why I put a minus sign.
Excuse me? Yes?
Yes, he had a combined, so I just wrote one motion.
Uh, okay. There's a quick motion.
You can do it that way, or if I have...
Okay, it's on your page here. First motion is for the Leland Christian Neighbors. Okay, you did one combined motion for both of them, okay. The same thing for the V F W Lake Leland Little Neighbors Post. We need to enter a two agreement with them to utilize the funds as they have since submitted to us. We will complete the agreements and reside between us and between the county and these organizations, so you have a joint motion here. If I recall that.
Mr. Westall?
I move to approve the agreements with Leland Christian Neighbors in support of Leland Christian Neighbors Food Pantry in the amount of $57,800 for a term ending December 31, 2025, and with the V F W Lake Leland Little Finger Post in support of... 31, 2025, and with the VFW Lake Leonard Little Finger Post in support of accessibility renovations in the amount of $12,343.16 for a term ending December 31, 2025.
Second.
Word by Commissioner Robbins, discussion? Huh? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Motion carried six one. Schrager?
I move that Leonard County Board of Commissioners appoint Kim Chong to the Land Aid and Tribe Authority for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2027.
Second.
Word by Commissioner Robbins, discussion? Huh? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Yeah, I don't know who all over there.
There's a two, four, three.
Oh, was it four, three? Okay. That's four, yeah. All right, next up, we have our Leonard Neighbors.
I'll go back again because someone asked here, you're not gonna see this picture very well. For the public, and this is mainly for the public, and I know you all saw it last week, there is a piece of property, so you know, this all down here is the Falling Waters Lodge is all through here. I got it? Need to make sure I got it all right. It's all through here. Up through here, and the Leonard Dam is right through here, underneath the boardwalk. And out here is a piece of property way out here that has a sheet wall going around through all this. What it is, that per, a per, a portion of the sheet wall here is coming apart and needs to be repaired. The owners of the lodge would like to acquire, would like to have this piece of property, they will pay for the repairs. And, and because they thought the county owned it, they would want to quickly, us to quickly it to them for a dollar, and they may paint it. The piece of property is landlocked on behalf of the county. We can't get to it, I mean, but can. Problem is, we don't own it. We never have owned it. No one else could figure out how to, we've gone through every possible route to find if we even own it, and attorneys found it, came up after we've gone through all the items that we can do, and we've come to conclusion, we don't own it. However, these folks are gonna be putting in a sizable amount of money to make the repairs so it looks nice. And so they would just like to make sure if somebody down the road decides to come along and say they own it, and the county owned it, or somebody owned it, that they do have a quick claim deed, so they have this in their pocket, so they can say, we now have it, we've made the repairs and we own it. Simple as that, for a dollar. We don't own it, we'll be $1 richer. So there you go, that's all I can say. It took us months to figure this out, so there you go. That's all I can explain.
Is it above ground?
Oh, yeah. About this much up. Above the pond is on the pond side, so that's where it's all at. So, it's not on the riverside. Yes? Did I explain that well enough, Mr. Bunnings?
Yes.
I move that Leonard County Board of Commissioners, also the Chairman of Leonard County Board of Commissioners, to execute the quick claim deed to the Newbee, Newbee Company Incorporated of the parcel of property identified as chart block three of block four EE, Chandler's second addition to the building of Leonard for a sum of $1.
Second.
Word by Commissioner Robbins, discussion? Huh? All in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Motion carried seven zero. All right, next up, we have the DSC contract for 2025. Mr. Hockeys?
I move that the Leonard County Board of Commissioners approve the project management services agreement with GCS Technology Design LLC for professional services for the Point Broadband project and consulting services for the remaining unserved locations as outlined in the proposal from GCS Technology Design LLC dated February 1, 2025, with an amount not to exceed $120,000, and authorizes the Chairman to execute the agreement upon appro- approval as to form by the legal counsel in substance by the county administrator.
Second, second, second.
All right, Mr. Hockeys?
I would like to speak to this motion, um, partially because we have a lot of people, this has been a long, we've been working on this for four, five years, and a lot of people do not know the history. So, um, the LIV committee, which Commissioner Russell was on, worked on options for covering the 25% of our population in the county, who had no or very inadequate broadband. Some people have, um, dial-up still. Could not download, could not engage. We had teachers going to the library at night to do their work, we had people running their businesses from the home, going to a library at night to do their work. We had children who could not do homework. At one point, they estimated that 25% of the kids at Glenlake Schools did not have broadband. Their moms and dads were having to take them to the library at night so they could do their homework. So broadband has become necessary to engage in life at this point. So they examined a lot of different options and opportunities, talked to a lot of providers, and then Point Broad, and if I'm wrong here, and your question was all, Point Broadband offered a deal that far exceeded any figures that anyone in the LIV committee had encountered. They saw an opportunity to come in and provide and cover, rural counties, they, they do rural counties, to cover the 25% of unserved people, and provide some competition for Charter for those people who already had broadband. They offered a price of $5 million. Other prices that they had heard, I believe, were in way in excess of $2 million. So that was a real opportunity. Then we got the infrastructure money, and it was infrastructure money. It was going to cover 4.2 of the 5. That too made a tremendous amount of sense. There was a glitch, and I will say, people keep saying, well, and they can get Starlink. Well, some people can get Starlink, but if you live in the woods, you can't get Starlink. It's also very expensive, and I do have constituents who are unable to get Starlink, some that have, and they're paying twice what other people are paying. So, and I will guarantee that people who could get Starlink have done it, because they've been waiting three to five years. At the same time, Charter had two grant areas on the west side of the county. And because, as a gentleman's agreement, I've been told, because Charter was already in there, Point did not bid on a few thousand people on the western side of the county, mostly my district and Chairman Yoder's district. So we knew that that was going to be an issue we had to deal with. And I know that we couldn't tell those people, well, your tax dollars came in and we decided to use it just for other people and not for you. We have to deal with everyone in the county, I would have lived. Charter did indeed cover an extra 700 houses when they did their ARDOF work, which was great. Not everyone is covered as yet, and we have a commitment to those people as well. They've been waiting four or five years, so we're not done. I must add, I'm going to add that there were people in Commissioner Russell's district that could not call 911, 911. That's unacceptable. AT&amp;T was no longer gonna service their landlines, so as peoples had problems with their AT&amp;T phones, the suggestion was unplug it and throw it away, or something like that. I'm basically, sorry about your loss. So we as a county cannot allow that. So this has been a long process. We have done our best to serve the people in this county and bring equitable service to everyone here. And yes, it sounds like a lot of money, and it's a very expensive process, unfortunately. So that money was like the rural electric, federal rural electric work done in the, what, the 30s? Companies don't wanna go into very rural areas because they can't make enough money. So then the government, we, the government, step in so that everyone can share in today's economy, so children can learn and people can communicate.
All right, Commissioner Bunnings?
Yeah, I would like to have a division of the questions. I believe that one is the BEES program, and the other one is the broadband. I'd, I'd like to look, talk about those separately if we may.
Well, we have one contract before us. I just made a recommendation, last year you only had one contract, one contract, and it was for the broadband. The other one, you just paid.
Second.
Okay, so, to Commissioner Bunnings' point, he would like to split up where we have a vote on broadband projects, and then the BEES projects?
Right. If we could do that, I believe we can.
You wanted to amend the motion, yes?
No, we'll just, it's, we'll just break it up, yeah, we'll just break it up into two parts. On the same motion, but we'll just break it up.
You mean just my discussion, not for the vote? No, no, for the vote.
Wait a minute, you, you have a motion to approve this contract, so I, you're gonna have to stop all that original motion, not to approve this contract.
Okay, you're right, you're right. It would have to be.
I'll make a request to separate the question.
I would take an amendment to separate the question. All right. So it is easily divisible, and I think it clearly can be divided.
I, I support that amendment, um, because I think we need to find out what's been happened to the status of the BEES program, and if it even exists with, with federal funding, and I think we need to consult the help to do that, but I think that's the first question before we approve of the BEES program.
Yeah, and that's, and that's my point too, I, I appreciate what point broadband is not, and I feel like we should continue with that, so they can continue that project, but the BEES program in general, I've heard some rumors about it, that may not be in fruition, you know, since it's come from the federal government, so that's, I'm, I'm whole, that's, I appreciate you splitting it up, so.
So I, I'd like to address the, the broadband program. I mean, if, if I look at, at that, I mean, there have been many, many contracts for this thing, and the last one actually set for, to completion. You know, he was paid $156,000 last year, and it was supposed to be completed by June of 2024. Now, we're talking about adding $3,000 a month to, to complete it, and I just don't, I just don't wanna, I thought we voted pay him for completion. If, if, and if we have, I mean, if, if we, did he collect $156,000 last year?
The contract last year was $96,000, twelve payments of $8,000 for Point Broadband. The $5,000 that you're speaking of, the difference, was by invoice for the west side negotiations. So it was separate questions, very similar to what you're discussing now, but Point Broadband was $96,000.
All right, so, so, but, but it, it talked about completing Point Broad, Broadband by June of 2024.
Correct. Our effort, as well as approved last January, as I said in the cover memo, the county changed the completion date. We've made the change, not, not our consultant here. Because of difficulties Point Broadband was having, maybe internally, externally, the this board, or the previous board, made an agreement to, at the project with, the contract would be completed by, and no later than August 31st, September 31st, 2025.
So, so we, consulting fee get reduced because of that? So that, I mean, because that his consulting should have continued if it was for the completion of this? We shouldn't be paying him again for the completion.
You know what, the work continues. The problem that we've been.
Correct, and that's by the Chair.
Redundant, was that a question to be answered?
That was a question to the Administrator. As I understand it, and according to our attorneys, he completed his contract for 2024 of $96,000.
Period, job is complete.
No, it's, well, it is if you wanna think, except that we have three work cabinets that will have to be reviewed. He's completed, he fulfilled his proportion of the agreement. If everything had gone according, and his contract was for, the way I understand, but I wasn't here. But his fee was $90,000 regardless. Nope, you know, it wasn't my money, it was $96,000, period.
But isn't he the manager of this project?
He is the manager of this project.
So the project did, isn't getting done, and he, so he managed it poorly.
I don't know if he managed it poorly or did not manage it poorly, I can't, I won't speak to that. All I know is that from last May, we had to go into negotiations in order for Point Broadband, they had the capacity to complete what we needed to have completed by December. And the only reason they didn't meet their guy, their goal, be up to cabinet 14, is because of people coming in and saying, wait a minute, you need to get some permits up to the most sensitive areas of, of land in Leonard County, which I'm glad they did, we're all happy that they did. The permits are in place, so when the snow starts to disappear, we're gonna finish up on north, finish up the tip of Leonard County. Then by next summer, they will finish the last three components. This is coming down all on the east side of Leonard County.
So, if I read this right, it's 96% complete?
Up there in Leon, up in cabinet 14.
Yeah, and then they gotta complete this last 4%. And, and, and we're gonna pay $3,000 a month as a consultant for the last 96%?
That's his offer, which is a decrease from, what was it before, $8,000 a month? I have it in here, leave it. He was, he was charging $8,000 a month, and he has reduced it to $3,000 a month.
Why he increased the over to eight?
Yeah, I would like to interject, 'cause 96% up, remember 14 cabinets? So if there are four cabinets left, four of 14 is not, that's not 96% complete. And a lot of the delay also was just getting, you know, he'd go into a homeowner, they would go into a homeowners association, and the homeowners association says, no, we don't want you in here. Well, a lot of the people did, and so it's been true, it's been difficult. And Chris is in their hands, I talked to this man, he's in there hands-on, he talks to workers, he talks to managers. So, um, it's not that he managed it poorly at all, it's Point's difficulties in getting all of the approvals they needed to just keep working. Meanwhile, though, they weren't working.
And I, I appreciate the history, um, I mean, and I know a lot of people worked hard. But that's history, that's looking backwards. And I think what happened on this is that there was a wave of government funding, a wave of emphasis on providing, uh, providing access to rural areas that Leonard County made an early decision to get ahead of. Anyone who's been on a wave knows you don't wanna be ahead of it, you wanna be with the wave, because that's where the energy is. So that's why we have obligated $5 billion for this project. Our neighbors, Benzie County, waited, and honestly, we should have seen this as. And honestly, we should have seen this at some point. Their contribution, their payment is $1.5 million for, to cover everything. They hired a company that was a local company and worked with them. Their consulting fees are $20,000. We have paid Mr. Scher $388,000. So there's been, we've just been ahead of this thing and here we are tonight with a contract that we've only had three or four days, didn't go through the executive meeting process. And again, we want to vary it through for some reason. This idea of BEED is interesting. The BEED, BEED is a lot of federal money paying between $6,000 and $9,000 per hookup. And it's great for the four townships, your four townships. BEED is going to go through regardless of if we hire Chris Scher or don't. Because there are bidders out there who are in line for this money. We don't select the company, the state does. We don't evaluate the company, the state does. This is not a local project anymore. There's just been such a flood of money coming. So to me, it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I asked the question on the performance and I appreciate, because I thought the last contract was a performance contract, which means, okay, you do the work and you get paid. And because of the wording on that contract, it wasn't, there's an, I'm not an attorney, but we're about ready to enter into a contract where once again, there is no way to check performance on this thing. There's no requirement for an end of contract report. Look at our website. Look at our internet website. The last thing on our internet website was IDCS in, I think, mid-2022. Go to Benzie County's website. Every two months, at least, there is a report on that website given by their contractor so that people know what's going on. I'm sorry to get wound up on this thing, but it just, it just seems like folks have gotten so tight and close to it that they didn't have the separation to see that there are other ways to accomplish this goal, cheaper ways and more efficient ways. So I really don't want to approve this contract tonight. We tried to call Chris. He didn't return calls. I don't know why. He continued to work and he knew he didn't have a contract, continued to work in January. We met, but then you guys met with him. And we didn't have a contract, with no contractual relationship. There have been some problems here. And I myself, I don't want to, I'd rather wait till March than try to work our way through them. And I want folks to know there are alternatives now. There are other people you can hire and there are other companies out there right now bidding for this work. And it's going to happen. You're going to start seeing it soon.
I'm alarmed at some of what I hear and some of the information. We just got this tonight. Some of the information you documented here is certainly a whole lot different than I remember. But he wasn't the project manager. He was a project consultant validator. His job was to consult with us, consult with Point Broadband and validate that the people that were managing the project were doing their job. He's the one that let Kathy know when the county could send the bill. I, he's reported out to us at least a dozen times in the two years that we've been here. He's been on the Zoom, he's presented in person. I think we have to be careful about people that have worked hard for us and then being disrespectful to them or being critical of them. And I think it's okay for you to be critical of them. I think you ought to do that in person. But to sit here and say some of the stuff that I'm hearing tonight, I think it's unfair. Chris has done an excellent job doing the project and we would have failed without him. He's the one that helped save this project the year ago. And the other thing I'd say is you have more confidence in the BEED program than I do because I see every time I read the paper, there's a whole of the ones that were committed to the project. They're pulling them away.
And how will Chris change that?
Well, that's why, that's why I support his request. But you're saying, you're saying in this document, Mr. Chairman, he's saying in this document that the BEED program will do this. I don't think the BEED program will do it. I hope they do. But it's not Chris's fault and we have to be respectful of the good service that he's given to us.
I need to say one really quick thing.
I would say we kind of gave this to that. I want to hear the motion again so that everybody understands what they're voting on and then call the question.
Wait, you want it separated?
It is separated.
It is separated. It is separated. So we're talking about.
And can I make one statement before we do that?
Yeah.
Sir, do you want to know what's on your agenda? For the last two months and a half, I've been questioning, when are we going to get a proposal? I've been requesting a proposal since November. It's on your agenda tonight. It's here. If you don't want to move on it, don't. It's not going to hurt my feelings. But don't criticize me why it's on this agenda because it needs to be addressed by you.
I agree. I do criticize you.
No, you did, but that's okay. I can handle it. But I'll take it from there. Because you questioned, why is it on this agenda? Why wasn't on the agenda last week? Because I didn't get a proposal until last Wednesday night.
You're talking about last week. I questioned that.
No, you just questioned it tonight. But that's okay. We'll just want to thank you. One correction. Hang on, let me sure. You've got to understand, I can be a little bold and a little testy because I'm not going to be here long term. So I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it, too.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just put the page, I'll just lay it on the table. This is what I want to lay it on the table, so. Don't like it?
No, I actually appreciate that.
And I know you do. Because we'll have a cup of coffee tomorrow and we'll just laugh at each other. Like we did last week.
I would like to make one correction, though. And that is, the reason he kept, when this man got this contract, he came up here and spent an entire summer, drove the entire county, stopped in front of every single home to measure whether they had rugged. He has been completely committed to getting his job done. So if he was helping us in January, that's why. Because you have someone who is committed to us and committed in helping us.
All right, Mr. Martin?
I'd like to read on page 81. Okay, all the cabinets except 1, 2, and 7, that listed attachment aid will be completed and paid by and on or before December 31st, 24, 2024. This represents 96% of the unserved homes as identified in the attachment aid. That's what they're saying. 1, 2, and 7 are, those are ones in Elvin, Davenport Township. And they will be completed by the end of August, 2025. So we are talking about 96%.
Yeah, that, that August date is September 31st, the actual agreement. I mislied that in there, so that's my fault. But it's August that the last three cabinets that I will, I can almost, I can make a bet that they'll be done before August, September 31st. These guys will come here because they want to get it all done, too, because they're not making any money until they get the cabinets done. And like I said, the only reason, though, the cabinet 14 did not get done, Eagle stepped in, realized that we needed to get permits from them, and we're glad they did because we, there could have been some failures that they would have had to go back and do some work. So it was a good thing to happen. And Eagle and Point Broadband looked very closely to give the funding and this is in their hands as we now. Here's the motion if you wanted me to redo that. The motion would be that I've learned that the county board of commissioners approved a project management services agreement with DCS Technology Design LLC for professional service for Point Broadband project as outlined in proposal from DCS Technology LLC dated February 1st, 2025 within an amount not to exceed $24,000 and authorizes the chairman to execute the agreement upon approval as informed by legal counsel and subsist by county administrator. And the reason I put those two in there, I don't have a complete contract here and I want to make sure that everything you desire is in that agreement so that we have it the way that we want it, not necessarily this. So that's how. It's a standard process we use in Traverse City all the time. So I'm just following that.
Twenty thousand, so one hundred and twenty?
Going to be $24,000. $3,000 a month for eight months, not to exceed. If they get done in June, we're not paying for the last three months. By month, because of monthly fee.
All right.
That's what he was asking for for Point?
Yeah. He changed it from a flat fee amount to a per month amount.
All right, so do you have an understanding of what the motion is?
Yes, I just want to make sure everybody understood what we were talking about because we've gone a lot of back and forth. So we know what we're voting on and let's vote.
Can I just ask one clarification?
Yes.
It's a $3,000 flat fee amount, but previously there wasn't a monthly amount.
It was a total of $96,000, period, that you're going to have to pay out regardless. And we paid them out and had the $8,000 a month.
And then he would charge us $3,000 when, every time he finished one of those cabinets?
No.
No?
No, the $8,000 was inclusive of everything.
Yeah. I was looking, it said regarding the, the Point Broadband project is expected to be completed by September 25, but could be completed sooner. If the final cabinet invoice and supporting documentation from Point Broadband is on or after the 10th of any month, the last invoice for DCS validation services will be for the following month, allowing at least 30 days to review, validate, and approve the final work. And it's up to eight months. So there is.
I would just need to clarify something. So I'm assuming we will vote on the BEED if we receive the money? Is that what, is that how we're dividing this?
We have a balance.
Yeah, you have a balance.
We haven't talked about that.
That's why we separate.
All right, so the first one will be on the Point Broadband project and that contract in general, the $1,400. Then will be the BEED after that. So all in favor of the Point Broadband project, that contract, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Chair, it's 61. All right, and now we're up to the BEED program.
In his, if I could, Chair? The BEED program is month to month and is expected to be reviewed, awarded, and accepted by individual ISPs by the end of 2025. This consulting service will terminate the month BEED awards, that BEED awards are accepted and by the awarded ISPs. The BEED program is potentially subject to new presidential administration review and possible changes. If changes to the BEED program do occur, this agreement will be reviewed between DCS and the county administrator and mutually determine if a pause or completion, complete termination of this agreement is in order. The agreement may continue upon mutual agreement, month to month, until all unserved locations within Leonard County have been put into a plan for getting access to adequate high-speed broadband services. The current fees proposed will be valid through December 31st of '25. If by chance the BEED process extends into '26, extension of this contract is at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners and subject to rate review. This is his proposal. This is his words.
I'd like to put the administrator, would you advise or would you be comfortable with seeing, having this back as soon as we get a status on whether or not BEED money would be available? We don't want to approve a contract until. I will share that with you and it may happen after I leave, but that's what I'll do. And make sure the next administrator, if it doesn't happen in March, then it may happen later, but that's what it will have to be. Because you're called to make a disclaimer.
Yeah, I would agree. We need to verify that that money's to be earned.
We don't have a motion on the floor.
You have a half motion.
No, you do not have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the other, on the other floor. Yeah, but we need a motion for the second half.
But we, Mr. Chair, we don't need a motion on the table. If we, if nobody makes a motion, we don't have a motion on the table.
Right.
And I was suggesting that we don't need a motion on the table.
And we want to have discussion then?
No. Not until we find out if it's actually going to exist. If it's not going to exist, then don't even talk about it. Spend a lot of time talking about stuff that doesn't exist.
I will say that if that money comes through, all it's going to cost us is the consulting services.
I would like to have a discussion just because I want to tell Chris that this fee was $5,000 for doing exactly the same thing. We got absolutely, that I can tell, anything out of it. There's been, there's no reports of who he talked to, when he talked to him. And now he wants to increase that to $8,000. So I think it's worthwhile having a discussion just to say, don't come back with us for the $8,000 with the same identical thing. Because I don't think there's support you're for.
You can call Chris anytime.
Okay. We're talking about, but we're not.
Go on with the, I'm going to have some order here. So, Mr. Walter, we'll go with you and then we're going to move on.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I said, furnace down the road were wrongs because there's not the course of talking about. We're wasting people's time. So let's get on with the agenda.
All right. With that being said, we will move on. Next, and I wish we got a little on Township Tower Project discussion.
Well, you have a pretty long memo coming. You have a lot of information in there as relates to the Leonard County Communication Tower. Oh, we did see the record Eagle today. Frank Furt is having a nice discussion on a 195-foot tower that got approved and is being built in. People need to know about it. Well, if you look at the timeline that we have, shows a lot of talk going on over the last two and a half years. My thing is, I need to know, you've got three choices here as it relates to the power. One, as you all well know, and it's been more publicized, that the Leonard Township Planning Commission denied, or will be denying, our special land use permit at the meeting I was having on January 30th. They went through the standards that would have to be met. They only approved out of the six that needed to be approved. They only approved one of the standards. And I bet they put a condition on that that we may or may not have wanted to deal with. What would you, you want me to finish or you want to go ahead? Just ready. We're here now. Get rude. Is there anything you're heavy that I?
You're both fast there because right here.
Outward. Ah, 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 water. There you go. Anyway, the big thing is that I want to bring to your attention is you have four agreements that have to be dealt with. One of them is pretty easy. Well, one of your options is that, Well, one of your options is that, and what is happening is that the Leonard Township Planning Commission still has to vote on their, um, I'm trying to remember what it's called, but still has to vote to officially disapprove our, or their findings of facts, that telling them to officially vote on that. And I'm sure they're gonna do that at their next, in the next meeting. Or, if it's like the speedy processes found in the past, maybe not. But anyway, uh, the only other option that the county would have is that if they receive the findings and facts that have been voted on by the planning commission, if the county wishes or desire that within twenty-one days of approval, then we would take the, we would take the matter to, uh, to, to Circuit Court. It's not a recommendation I would apply to you, because now, pursuing somebody that, or we would be testing something that we were supposed to be working with the township, and if their planning commission doesn't think this was, the project that we had was worthwhile, why do we want to take the, the risk of ruining the, further damaging a relationship that is not of our making? Well, the first, with the first agreement is the agreement that we had with the property owners as it relates to using the site. I think the first thing we're gonna need to do is, uh, that we need to, uh, terminate that agreement, and you're gonna need to terminate that agreement so that we know that it's no longer under, that we're gonna move forward with it. Uh, we have, only cost that we have associated with that particular agreement was about seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more, a little under twenty-five thousand dollars, as related to designing the roadway up through there, doing some, uh, soul borrowings, and also using the services of Progressive AE to help us with the equipment and work of, we're going through that. The second one is the agreement with Midway Electronics, and as y'all know, the county did, when we entered into that agreement with them, uh, one of the, we were required to have, give a fifty percent, uh, payment towards that so they could purchase the tower on our behalf. We have a tower on the ground at the manufacturer's location, waiting for us to, to request it being delivered or not being delivered. We also know that if we were to use Midway again, the prices of constructing the tower, I'm sure within the last year and a half have gone up. So, we were gonna get, that price probably was not going to be insane, and our current agreement with them, our current extension will expire sometime late into this summer. Part of it says that we need to probably close out, this, terminate the disagreement, ask them for an accounting of all the funds that have been given them, if there's any left over that they return them to us. The third one deals, which may be a little bit more problematic, deals with the tower space. The tower space agreement with Cherryland Electric Cooperative, they made it into agreement for them to allow them to put equipment on four towers, and three of the equipments already been placed on, on the towers. In exchange for that agreement, they agreed to give us forty percent of the construction costs that we had, of four hundred and five thousand dollars, up to two hundred thousand dollars toward construction. We use that money mainly to help do the work as it relates to, uh, Midway Electronics, you know, for their stuff. And the question's gonna be, is, you know, how much of that money do, are we gonna need to reimburse if they, if they have an equipment on three of our towers right now, but the fourth one is not gonna get built? It's a discussion that we think is gonna have to take place with Cherryland Electric to see how they want to proceed and with this particular part of it. And the next, the last one is our intergovernmental agreement on construction of the Leonard Township Communication Tower with the township. This was approved by the township, I think I have it in there, uh, a year and a half ago. We didn't get that agreement fully executed until October of last year. The, of course, when the agreement was made, it was four township supervisors ago, and the supervisor that was there last year was not a strong proponent of the tower. Uh, we did make the change that I did mention to him, that the agreement then was that once they executed, they had to give us a hundred thousand, thousand dollars. The last thing we needed was to have a hundred thousand dollars sitting in a bank account that we had that we would have to get back, so we were saying, now you don't have to pay us yet, when we get, when we get the special land use permit, we can move on with it. So, the question is that we ought to probably go ahead and just cancel this agreement with the township, or continue the discussion with the township about it, about the power, because we have one that we'd be glad to, to give them. But I honestly believe that this county should no longer be the front person for finding a location, to getting everything completed on it, past the special land use permit, they can do that themselves. And once they have a spot, we'll be glad to talk to them again. Well, you, give them the power. I mean, yeah, that's part of our, be part of our contribution, but we still need to continue that. We also, you should also give consideration that whatever agreement you want to have with the township, we ought to make sure we're clear on the parameters and the financial resources that the county's gonna want to participate in, in the future communication tower. Some of the, you have to go through a special land use permit, at least there's one person that's sat through most, most of that. The same criteria they used to turn our power down, special land use permit, they would have to, they would have to turn down any special land use permit for a power. And it's gonna be, as I know, one person sent out an email to everyone, the same discussion as relates to having a, that the technology is gonna take place where you want, we need a tower within two years. I don't know where that came from, but it may be true, it may not be true. My thing is why I put all this in here, it goes, my responsibility to say, here's where we are, here's what we need to do. You have three choices, you can do nothing, set it aside and let it ride. You could have, you could direct me to move forward with, uh, working on these three agreements, four agreements to see how we want to put that together, so it saves the next county administrator from having to do something, and to get as much done as I can in a month and a half. Or you can wait for your next county administrator to deal with all this. All the documentation is here, so I'll wait for it. So, there you go. Okay, I'm done. Yes?
I have four motions here. We'll start with one, and when we get that one through, and we'll move on, yeah. One is, uh, my, I would move that we provide proper notice to terminate the lease with Brian E. Mitchell and Holly Jander Miller.
Okay, reread that motion.
Okay, it's, it'd be, a motion, I move, make a motion to provide proper notice to terminate the lease with Brian E. Mitchell and Holly Jander Miller.
That's brother and sister.
Okay.
Support for that?
I'll support that. Can I just ask, is there a penalty for that?
No.
I have a...
Well, that's what we'll have to figure out, if we provide a notice and then we'll find out.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to discuss that along with the other three issues, because I did attend the Township Board meeting, uh, last week, and, uh, the board and individual trustees and the supervisor all commended the county, and commended Richard for the hard work, and did not, did not agree, uh, with, with some of the statements that were made at the planning commission, but the planning commission is the planning commission. I believe the township knows that they still have the most underserved cell coverage in the county, and I believe the township's interested in coming back and saying, we'll do a site, a site plan, we'll do a, we'll, we'll seek the permits, we'd like to work with you. I think, except for the, the contract with the Mitchells, we ought to relay that others until we see what the township might or might not be able to do, because the last thing we need to do is have a tower lying on the ground, or to pay for something that we can't use, or to try to sell something at a discount because we don't have a place for it. So, I think we ought to hold off on the other three motions you were gonna make.
Well, let's get to discussing them, and if we don't get a second, then we will, but...
All right, any other discussions on that motion? Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All voters say aye? Period, seven zero.
Okay.
All right, Devin.
Yeah, you know, I agree with most everything you said, but, but I do, I do think that we need to proceed with the termination, well, and I'll make a, a motion to proceed with the termination as an agreement with Midway Electronics and send a bill to Little Township for the, the cost incurred. Skip that, I'll start.
And I'll see what that early day next administrator's...
Yeah.
I'm not.
No, your name very much, good for you. I would just make the motion to proceed with the termination of the agreement with Midway Electr- Electronics and, and try to, you know, reduce the, our cost as much as we can to that.
All right, does support for that motion?
I'll support for discussion.
All right.
Well, I, you know, tell me how fast the township can, I mean, I, six months is like too long, and if they can figure out something in three months, that's probably about right, you know?
And I'm not sure, and I'm not committing to township, obviously, to do it. I, if we cancel the contract, I suspect that the next contract with Midway for the same piece of equipment would be much bigger, and I think it would be advantageous to just hold off on breaking that contract.
You mean the three months?
Devin, if you agree with that thought on those three, I'll be happy to go up and check on number four and see when they are gonna be a report back at your meeting, at your March meeting. You can get, move forward with everything else.
Well, yeah, I mean, my thinking is we need to talk with them, find out what it's gonna cost to, if we're gonna attempt, you know, terminate it, what it, that's gonna cost, what's the cost if we want to get the tower up here, because I don't believe the manufacturer's gonna hang on to a two law.
No, and that's part of it, here, they'll start charging us rent, you know?
Uh, and that's why I had to enter on the bottom of that, if we want to proceed with termination without cost, was, you know, it's okay, we can do that. We would like to do our right for the accounting of all the expenses related to the agreement and above questions and possible reimbursement for the remaining funds. But another thing we wanted to find out is, what's it gonna cost us to get the tower moved up here? What additional cost do we have that we haven't been built for, such as stories of the tower since it's been laying there for the last year? I don't know.
Probably started to rust.
I hope not, because then we had a bad tower in the first place, not supposed to rust.
Well, it's not hanging on the ground, though, is my...
Oh. But those were questions that we would have to ask, and we may, we had asked it anyway without terminating anything.
Well, I'll remove my motion, if that's okay with the second.
Is that okay?
Okay, and I have your permission to at least go have a conversation and report back at, at our March executive meeting.
Is that okay?
But...
Go ahead.
Yeah. I would ask that we negotiate with Cherryland Electric, when we get a final settlement, we'll see what we have to, we'll make the motion to do that, we're working on that idea, bring that back in work.
I will, I'll, I'll work with Cherryland to see it, because if the next tower comes up, it may be, maybe he says that. I'm gonna talk to him if he wants me to.
That would, that would be my way to say it.
Motion or suggestion?
No, we'll suggest it, yes. Well, I'm just saying, well, these last three agreements, we'll just leave them alone, so I'll report back on all three of them in, in March.
So, you have to give a suggestion instead of a motion?
Yeah, I have to suggest, yeah. Then, the, the fourth thing was, do we want to send a letter voiding the agreement?
No.
No?
I'm gonna talk to them. Okay, we may amend the agreement. Once again, it's one of those, I'll go have a, I'll have a conversation with Dr. Conley and see where they are.
I appreciate that.
And report back. I just want, can't do nothing, you know? I'll do my best and try to leave it in better hands.
Just try to give it a little leeway here. Not much.
You ready, buddy? All right, moving on to item number three, Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal.
Okay, last month, we gotta find my, hold on, handle it here. Last month, no, I know where I put it, it was way back here in the back of this one. Last month, you approved our, the agreement to renew the agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Now I've lost my spot here, hang on, hang on, because I'll get, I'll mess this up a little bit. Last month, you approved the agreement to move forward with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Well, what we learned about two weeks ago is that, back in twenty-eighteen, and you probably remember this, Mr. Bunny, you, Mr. Whistle, that we went through the process of, with Blue Cross Blue Shield as, as our agent, or who manages our healthcare program, which we are self-funded. And you had, there was a rider in there, as we, yeah, we're on that one. And what we had in there is that we learned that any employee who needs healthcare coverage due to an auto accident, Blue Cross Blue Shield would, would be the secondary source of coverage. That's the rider that we currently have in our Blue Cross Blue Shield package, and it's been there since twenty-eighteen. Same rider. There's a small problem, two small problems. The first one is, this was not the intent of the Board of Commissioners at the time that this took place in twenty-eighteen, that they wanted Blue Cross Blue Shield to be the primary coverage, the primary coverage if any of our employees or families, you know, were involved in an auto accident. And letters were sent, and all this stuff was took place at that time to, to make all that happen, so that's what we did. Secondly, we also recently learned that the rider that's been in our package for the last six years, now seven years, does not cover, cover no employees, has.
Doesn't cover them.
Cover no employees, so any of our employees are their dependents, most likely, if there had been an accident, would not have been covered, although they've paid some of the coverage, technically they didn't have to, so we all came this to you. So, what I have attached here is a housekeeping matter, which the plan of, a revised agreement, which eliminates the rider, and we have it removed, and thus making Blue Cross Blue Shield the primary healthcare provider in the event of healthcare provisions due to an auto accident, which was the intent that you wanted way back when. The reason why I had it put on here is to change, and I wasn't going to just sign an agreement unless, without your also proof. So, that's why it's here, for asking that you go and amend it, that way I can sign this tomorrow as your representative, and it was done, get straightened out. So, here you go.
Mr. Walter?
I move the Leonard Township Board Commissioners approve the renewal of the, this be your twenty-twenty-five Blue Cross Blue Shield contract as amended to the action taken at the regular meeting of the Leonard Township Board Commissioners on January one, one, twenty-five.
Very good. We're waiting for Mr. Robinson's discussion.
Just if there's a cost associated with that.
If it was so minimal as around the area. No, because we're self-funded, they pay whatever claims, so it's not, they have something in there for themselves, who's to plan whatever claims. I got that right, Kathy?
Yeah, that's what I understand.
You forgot that, right, we've already audited. Mr. Robinson?
We're okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
All voters say aye? Period, seven zero. All right, next up, we have review of financials.
This is when you ask questions of claims and accounts for post audit, I've answered a few emails that have come my way. I think in late claims, there's something notable. Every year, we order the markers to hold the flags for all of the graves of veterans in the county, and we do that cooperatively with three different groups, and, um, my office coordinates that effort, and that's a bill for the American Legion, I think you see that in one of your claims. That's just something you only see once a year.
I just wanted to thank you for sending this out about the vendor, that was really nice, and I really appreciated that. It'll gain you an email.
It's very, very easy to generate that, takes literally seconds, so if you have a vendor question, I can shoot it right to you. And I try to copy everybody so that you all see the information equitably.
Questions? I have an unrelated question. Um, the, so we do pay, this is not comfortable, I think, anyways, so we do pay, Chris, it comes out of the general fund, I'm wondering why that doesn't come out of the ARPA fund?
Uh, when the Board of Commissioners approved that contract last year, they amended the special projects, which is funded from the general fund. They could have, they could have done it out of the ARPA funds, but they predominantly committed, and then in August, they were a hundred percent committed to the balance of the Point Broadband contract.
Is it my God, is that it should come out of ARPA because it's our broadband project? Broadband is general fund.
Any other questions?
Okay.
You lead. All right, special reports?
Special, Mr. Robinson? Well, it's not really a special land request for next month, Mr. Wilson said it last month. Um, I would like to have on the agenda, we talked a little bit about it, uh, just for discussion purposes only, uh, the nerves come in and talk, or have discussion on the nerves drop program, if we can.
Got it.
Any other public comment? Mr. Wayne.
Where was I? Well, that's right, the Titanic was about to hit an iceberg. Bottom line is, is that when I came here tonight to talk about this, that was my major concern, is that we are facing a significant debt issue, spending issue in this county. And unfortunately, from what I've seen tonight, it doesn't look like we're slowing down to ramming speed. It seemed like most of the people on the board are still voting for every kind of spending bill that comes to the commission. So, one of the items on the agenda that I was going to address is the extension of the broadband project and an escalation of the amount of money that's going to be spent on the supervision of it by an outside consultant. I would respectfully implore the request that the board members reject that expenditure. Too late now. But in the future, any expenditures on the point broadband project that is not legally compelled, because in my opinion, it was a boondoggle from the very start, and the $4 million that went into that project should have been directed to things like fixing the existing capital issues, investment issues, like even the ones in this government building that we're sitting in tonight. Because we spent the money on a broadband system that was completely unnecessary, and anyone who was confident in the provision of high-speed internet service in rural areas would have known that was the case, and Alan pointed that out by saying how much more expensive it was for us, we now say with a broadband system that is not only servicing a small percent of this county's population, we're still facing huge expenses to fix our government center. Despite that, there seems to be a move on the part of this board to spend even more money on the point broadband project. Remember, folks, this broadband project does not belong to this county. It's not our asset. It's one of the scandals of this whole thing, is that we spent county money to provide a system to point broadband that they own. I don't understand why we would continue to do that, and unfortunately, the citizens of this county are not paying the price financially. As a taxpayer, I am stating very plainly, I do not want this county to keep spending one more penny on point broadband project unless they are legally compelled to do so. We just cannot afford it. We talk about how we're struggling to provide affordable housing to people in this county, but one of the reasons is that the expense of county government is a burden to those citizens. Some people claim that it's silly to say that because we have a tax burden that's a low mileage, but our poverty values are so high that low mileage does not sufficiently compensate people who are trying to make it in this county on entry-level jobs or on average fixed incomes as seniors. The affluent population of our county, including those who spend only part of the year here, aren't bothered by these things, but the people who have a sole resident in this county are being squeezed financially to the point where they cannot make ends meet and are going to be forced to make decisions on how they spend their money month to month on whether it could be food, or their mortgage, or their healthcare expenses. When the residents of a county are having that kind of a problem, and I have talked to a number of them who were when I was knocking on doors for my campaign, it is unconscionable that the county board would be careless about how they manage the tax monies they collect. Fortunately, I believe this board is composed of a majority of individuals who understand this is a problem. I'm also letting the board know that my role as the chairman of the Republican Party and in service to the members of my party is that I will continue to come to these meetings and monitor the activities of the board and the expenditures of county money. I'll be looking for actions that would suggest that those priorities are being addressed. I know for a fact that Alan Campbell has convinced himself to be a budget hawk, and I applaud him for that, but I'm also letting the board know that I would be communicating with my members when these things happen, and we will bring the receipts when we tell them what is happening, what this board has done. If you feel that your constituents are indifferent to what you spend, all I can tell you is that you will soon find out if that's true or not based on your actions. My bet is that the vast majority of the people in this county want efficient, transparent, and productive allocation of their tax dollars to be standard procedure, and I also think that they want to keep more of their hard-earned money, not funnel into county coffers. If you need help getting support for spending cuts or program cuts, or any sort of rational plan to reduce spending, the Leland County Republican Party will stand squarely behind you, and as will I. I also know that the vast majority of my party members will support and vote for party board members who do likewise. However, as strongly as they will support someone who does that, they will be equally strong in their opposition to board members who do the opposite. They are fed up with the county confiscating their hard-earned money and wasting it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your willingness to listen to your constituents.
Any other public comment? Yes. Yes. Johnny?
Kathy Dawkins, Leland Township. Again, I appreciate what the board has been doing as far as spending the money. I do not know what Benzi has done with their broadband, so to hear that they've spent less money, we spent a lot, I would like to see, are they both apples, or is one apple and one a plum? I have no idea what's going on there versus what we've been doing here. So, before we make any decisions based on that premise, I would like to see more information. The other... This county is made up of basically two major parties with other parties in between. Right now, the Republican Party in... Chair Yoder, if I'm getting out of bounds, please let me know. I'm not trying to do this. But right now, the Republican Party is not doing this country any favors, and for somebody to come in here and use that party as a standard for how we are going to run this county is disgusting to me, reprehensible, scary. I do not want to see that happen here. I want us to remain a safety net for our constituents. I want the money to be spent fairly, but I do not want for the standard that is being used right now, where people are literally losing their jobs, out of country. I'm reading all sorts of situations that are third-hand from people that I know about what's happening because of the policies going on right now. We've got hackers and children, young people, that are going into our personal data. And I just, this whole thing is scary. So, please continue what you are doing here, but I do not want the Republican Party policies to be used as our standard. Thank you.
Keith Bedoune, Leland County. Trump won. Trump won the popular vote. Trump won Electoral College. So, that's a mandate. I don't care what anybody says about preference to this county, but Trump is doing a lot of work. Trump is helping to get the Israeli hostages back. He's doing a lot of stuff fiscally to help out this country. So, I don't care if somebody wants to complain about Republican Party. We lived four years under the Democrats, killing babies and doing all kinds of stuff. So, I support Republican Party. Is this working?
Any other public comment?
Amity, Casson Township. A majority of the people in this room today grew up going to the library on their bikes or their parents taking them to do a book report on Tom Sawyer, and when that book was gone, they had to go to Death of a Salesman, or Red Badge of Courage, or something from Shakespeare, or Kurt Vonnegut. Sometimes their parents had to take them, and they missed Gunsmoke, or I Love Lucy. It was inconvenient for them, okay? Broadband now is available, and teachers now have to have a program that checks out the book reports or the term papers they did on Jefferson for plagiarism, and getting the stuff that they copied off the internet. Using the excuse that it's inconvenient for parents, or kids need broadband because they have to stay home and can't get to the library, is a poor excuse for spending other people's money. And I learned a long time ago, it stood for opium, OPM, other people's money, and using... The board has a lot to do with the county and providing something that individuals, individual households should be doing on their own. And so, I concur with Jim White that you guys were spending too much money and shouldn't be involved with that sort of stuff at all. Thank you.
Bill Weisner, Elmwood Township. And again, it's on the elections. Until we have one person, one ballot, one vote, one day, then we'll have to be concerned about fraud. So, we're just expecting no fraud. And here, there, everywhere, we see it happening, and so... That's what the topic is about again. And this handout that I've given you is pretty much the same one, it's from last week's executive meeting. Folks can go up there and look in their notes for the meeting and find a handout very similar to this. So, and I just wanted to go over these charts. The first top, there are three questions for clerks, all the 15 or so clerks in our county, especially the county clerk, are listed here. And the first one has to do with cast vote records. You flip a coin 1,000 times, you should get about 50% heads, 50% tails, should look something like this. And this is the flip, and it should be within these borders. That's using probability. But what we see with the Mesa pattern, Tina Peters in Mesa County, Colorado, we've seen heavily over and over, strong Democratic vote, and then it comes just like a car cruise control up to a set point. It's way outside the expected standard, and that flips the votes. Here's what... Here's what it should be, normal vote, but here's what it was in the beginning because of the cast vote records being skewed by an algorithm, and the final vote then is less Republican to more Democrats. And if you look at the counties all over, it's not just one, heavy Democrat up to a set point in the end. And that's what cast vote records show. So, the question was, in Northport, I asked the county clerk, how your Dominion contact at election source explains the unnatural graphs produced from the cast vote records? This is 80%, 168 of 202 counties they looked at in 10 states, and this just repeats over and over. Second question was about the back door supposedly in our Dominion machines. This was asked of the chief operating officer and vice president, two top executives, by Mark Cook at election integrity presentation in August of this year, very last year, Berry County, Michigan. And they were asked, Dominion voting system had a back door, and supposedly, they said, yes, maybe there's more to the story, but we need to hear about that. And the third thing is, how do you explain the 2020 election for the Michigan Supreme Court candidates in both Antrim, where there was a 42% swing, unexpected, and in... It says Antrim twice, but it should be Leland for the second one, a 34% unexpected in Leland County. So, those are the questions. I've looked a little bit more, and for the 2008, because somebody mentioned, like with Obama, things changed drastically then, and so that could have changed drastically in 2020. Well, with the 2008 election in Leland County, Democratic for president and the Supreme Court won by about 3% over the Republicans. In Grand Traverse County, it was just the opposite. The Republicans won for president and Supreme Court about 3% over the Democrats. Not that much of a change. The big change was in 2020, where it was totally unexpected swinging. You can see those online, and so that is almost an impossible thing. So, we keep talking about, we have paper ballots, but they're not working. On the back of this, it's looking at Arapahoe County, and it looks at a cast vote record, and it should look like this, 25% swing on this tax, but what it is, it's totally the same, totally the same for both Republicans and Democrats. I'm out of time. Thank you. Please consider this and find out much more on my website, tcfamily.org, on the election thing on the top.
Josh Farman, Elmwood Township. I'm just speaking for the broadband. As a younger member of people here, broadband is a utility, is necessary. You can't function in today's world without good broadband. I think we've all probably lived through, we all lived through the iteration of nothing, pileup, crap, what we have now. If you don't have access to good internet, you can't do your job from home if you are sick or whatever else you need to do. There are just so many things that being prevented from the internet stops your ability to do. I would say that the county's prerogative is obviously to spend our money well, but to supply its constituents with the resources for success, which in this world is completely hand-in-hand with internet access. So, completely support the initiative to get internet to our constituents, also completely support our money being well-spent. I think like the transparency that was indicated with the docs that were given should be very helpful, because we're saying things like, we're spending poorly, or we're spending well. I think us actually knowing that information for sure would be very good for us assessing how successful you are. I think that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Mickey Eater. I live in Burnickville, although I don't see that name on any maps. So, I've been thinking a lot, I've been attending these meetings for a couple of years, and it's very interesting how we used to believe that all politics is local, but a lot of the discussion that has gone on this evening is certainly local, but not all of it. And I want to reiterate what somebody said. I've been thinking a lot about the Constitution, because there's a lot about it in the paper, and it starts out by saying, in order to make a more perfect union. It does not say, in order to make a more profitable union. And I encourage you all, as you start in these positions, to remember your responsibility is primarily local. We may spend money at times in order to benefit our neighbors. That's what I understand a more perfect union to be about. And I hope we don't forget that as we're concerned about... And to be honest with you, I'm not sure if we're concerned about spending or not, because there does not seem to be consensus in this room about whether the budgets are balanced, or whether there's a tremendous amount of waste. And I worry that if politics are local, and we can't agree on fundamental facts, then we're never going to be able to have an environment where we feel that we're part of a community and we trust each other. So, I'm asking everyone on this board to remember not only what happens in this room, but to communicate with your constituents outside of it, so that they can appreciate what the issues are, and potentially help inform the decisions that you make, so that they can benefit everybody. And I thank you all for your service.
Kathy Williams, Leland Township. I live north of Northport. What I was asking, I'm new to the whole county government thing, although I moved up here in 2007 to live with my folks in the system, and my mother's birthday is tomorrow, she'll be 99, and she keeps me on my toes. But I understand that this year's expenditure, budgeted expenses is around 17 and 1/2 million dollars, and the expected revenue coming in is around 12 and 1/2 million. And when I was asking some commissioners about just some questions, and I was given that information, I'm thinking, that's a problem, because I know I have to look at my budget every month. And so, all I'm asking is, again, transparency seems to be the byword nowadays. I'm just asking that all the commissioners be very transparent about what's happening, and it's very helpful, at least to me, and I think your constituents, if we get specific information about specific things that you're looking at and doing, and how that money's going to go out, and how the expected revenues coming in are going to help that. I just know that my mom and dad built their house in 1971, and the permit is still tacked in the garage. And I remember Dad saying to me, he spent $25 for that permit. My mom's grandson is going to be building on our property out there, and I just picked up a list today from planning and building safety, and it's like a whole page of permitting stuff that has to be done. I know times have changed, and things need to change with it. I get that. As a nurse of over 50 years, there's been a lot of changes. But I'm just asking that you really seriously consider that, because I love this place. I've been coming up here, we've been coming up here as a family since 1960s, and I consider it my home, and I want to keep it just as wonderful and spectacular as it is as we even move forward and changes. So, I'd like you to consider, just keep that in consideration. The other thing I just want to publicly say is a thank you to the road commission, because I come from Clinton County, and I remember when I was still living in Clinton County and coming up to be with my folks, and then going back, I always knew when I hit Clinton County, because the roads were terrible. But they do a spectacular job up here, and I just want to publicly say thank you, and I've heard others say that too. So, my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. We'll move on to Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Collins?
I have one, because we've heard quite a few comments about the broadband project, and I think it's time for this board to hear, to give a report on what we have accomplished. And I think we've accomplished a lot. We were a very underserved county. We identified 4,000 residences that did not have broadband by August, or have most of those covered except for... It was a very deliberative process to come up with that plan. We found a company that was willing to invest 75% of the cost of that project, and it was a nonpartisan, bipartisan vote to proceed with that. And I think it's so easy to be critical, and sometimes I leave here and I think, nobody likes anything that we're doing, but there are some really good things happening, and I also think this is something to brag about. So, I would just challenge all of us to try to find the silver lining in some of the issues that we all feel strongly about, because there's some really good stuff going on.
Commissioner Collins?
I guess I would just like to say that the other company that people have said we should have gone with, I know that they did one particular road up in Leland Township, and I had people coming, and they charred each person, each household, paid like $22,000 or $2,500 to get them to go in, and when people found out that we were having point come in, they were coming to me saying, can we switch now? They go down every day. I will also suggest that the people in Cedar still waiting for someone, Cherry Capital might have that, they do have a little area there. Anyway, the lit committee did an incredible job on this, and they were so careful and so thorough, and we got an amazing deal. So, thank you for your work. And yes, our object was always to serve all of you.
Not for your political financials.
No transfers, just budget amendments, great. Very simply, they're about to extend it. What we're doing is we're setting up line items for dollars that move specifically to your donation line, became key nine specific, or real specific, and 12 specific. We also have funds from the state of Michigan, the location of our partners, that is a mandate to spend, so we carry unspent forward. And that's what the first question amendment is? And, oh, I'm sorry, Court, I didn't have to get you. So, budget number 25002 is to set up those line items specific to dollars that carry forward year to year, unspent.
I make a motion that we ask the legislative amendment resolution number 25002.
Support.
And 25003 recognizes the receipt of revenue for Leland Christian Neighbors 911 Dispatch Council project and the VFW, and it also sets up the unspent grant money that's still available in the grant fund for a few just line items we can't, we can't not recognize those, they have to stay there until they're spent. So, that sets that up. And then, we had to rebuild the Leland Tower Fund, because it's a project that rolled into this year, and so we have to reestablish the revenue and the expenditure line items. And I also wanted to reflect the unspent money for heat pumps in the capital LA fund. But we've got two heat pumps ordered, that's going to spend that real quick.
All right.
It's okay.
I move we approve the resolution number 2503. Old. Well, the olds are not there.
All right, to the board. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims and accounts? This is claims and accounts, if you'll make a motion to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $550,212.72.
We're bringing a running discussion. Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say aye.
And then, approve post-audit? I don't have that number. Do you have post-audit?
Make a motion to approve post-audit, $2,986,912.81.
Second. We're with Commissioner Robbins. Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Will say aye.
Thank you.